Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council, our very first meeting of 2022. Welcome, everyone, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Is here. Is here. I think she's having technical difficulties, and so hopefully we will figure those out. Tonight, I just wanted to take a moment, since it is our first meeting of 2022, and kick us off with a stanza from Amanda Gorman's New Days lyric, her poem "Welcoming 2022", to kind of set the tone for us on our, for the city council and our meetings this coming year. So she wrote, "Even if we never go back to normal, someday we can venture beyond it, to leave the known and take the first steps. So let us not return to what was normal, but reach toward what is next." And I think as we look at our agenda just this evening and as we're moving forward, we're reaching for what is next in many ways here in the city. Tonight, we will review the staff recommendations on our ARPA funding. We have redistricting coming up, and we will continue our work on reimagining public safety. And those are just a few of the things that we'll be working on in the coming months. Looking at our agenda for the next few weeks, next, actually tomorrow, on Thursday, January 13th, the city council will have a closed session starting at 6:00 PM, and you will receive legal advice on the Tacoma Junction redevelopment and litigation regarding the national opioid litigations and settlement. On Tuesday, January 18th, we will be holding a community meeting on the staff recommendations for spending the American Rescue Plan Act funding. That'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It is a virtual meeting. There's more information on the city website. Then on Wednesday, January 19th, we're back here for our regularly scheduled city council meetings that start at 7:30. That evening, we'll kick off with a presentation and work session on draft redistricting maps. We'll have a voting session that includes a resolution adopting the city council meeting rules and procedures. The second reading ordinance amending the annual budget in order to provide additional compensation to city employees in recognition of their efforts during the last year. Our work sessions next week will include FY22 budget amendment number three and staff recommended spending plan for the ARPA funding. Then our next meeting will be on Wednesday, January 26th, again at 7:30 PM. The meeting will begin with a public hearing on the spending plan for the ARPA funding. We'll then have a presentation on reimagining public safety task force recommendations and moving that work forward. Next, we'll have a voting session on the first reading ordinance approving FY22 budget amendment number three, and then a work session on the spending plan for the ARPA funding. Then our next meeting is Wednesday, February 2nd. Again, we will meet at 7:30. That evening, we will have a voting session on the second reading ordinance approving FY22 budget amendment number three and the first reading ordinance approving the ARPA spending plan and budget amendment. And tentatively, we have a work session, a discussion of the redistricting plan and review of a draft ordinance. And that will take us then into early February. So that is our agenda moving forward for the next month or so. Now, we will turn to public comments on voting items, and we have, is Sean Henley with us. He is here to comment on our voting item tonight, a resolution approving the FY2022 wage adjustments.
He should be with us in just a moment. Here he is.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Sean Henley. I'm a Public Works employee and president of ASME Local 3399. Wanted to wish you all a Happy New Year and welcome back. Since you last met, our local has come to an agreement with the city on wages for this fiscal year, which you'll be voting on this evening. Our members felt that this was a reasonable compromise that addressed some of the pressing concerns of inflation, as well as acknowledged the risks our members and other city staff faced during the early months of the pandemic. Regarding the ARPA bonus, the $3,400 figure was reached as combined with hazard pay average paid between March and June of 2020. This bonus puts us on par with Hagerstown and other municipalities we used as templates in our recent public campaign. It's a gesture of good faith by the city to report its essential workers and greatly appreciated. With that being said, it was not our intention that this bonus, which covers Public Works employees and police dispatchers, would be a one-shot deal. And the agreement does not preclude us from making the case for additional funds. Two things to consider moving forward. One, this bonus does not currently apply to library, recreation, and neighborhood service staff who are also public-facing and have been in some capacity throughout the pandemic. And two, the pandemic is far from over, as evidenced by the Omicron variant and recent outbreaks we've had among city staff. Recognition of the risks of public service employees shouldn't be limited to a certain timeframe as the public health crisis continues. This bonus is a great first step, but I ask that this be an ongoing consideration and conversation between city management, council, and city staff in their respective reunions. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Sean. Next up, we have now general public comments. And the first person I have listed was Priscilla Labowitz. Is she with us?
She's with us, but I'm having a little trouble bringing her into the meeting. So why don't we skip her and move to the next person? I'll keep working with her.
Great. The next person I have on my list is Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of Tacoma Park City Council, Mr. Fox, and other city staff. I appear tonight on behalf of the Racial Justice Initiative and the Social Witness and Action Committee, or SWAC, of Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. I serve as co-chair of SWAC. I'm also a 22-year Tacoma Park resident. In presenting these comments, I am joined by now 10 other members and friends of Tacoma Park Presbyterian who are participating online right now. My comments address the staff recommended spending proposal for ARPA funds. I start with a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Fox and other city staff. Your thoughtful and detailed plan evinces a great deal of work and consideration of input from many, many community voices. We appreciate that this is not the final ARPA spending plan, and that public comment will obviously be sought over the next month or so. We anticipate following up with writing, written comments on many of the details that are in and not in the plan, and we intend to coordinate further input with other community organizations, including other faith-based organizations. Meanwhile, here are some of our initial thoughts. Broadly speaking, we support using all of the remaining $5.5 million of first-year funding on the needs for the most vulnerable residents. We urge you to act on these urgent human need allocations as quickly as possible and debate the rest of the package later. There is a $600,000 pilot for two full-time mental health care workers. We strongly support this proposal, which, as noted in the plan, addresses a desperate need for mental health outreach. But as the plan evolves, we would like to see this function be run independent of, even if in coordination with Tacoma Park Police. There is a $500,000 pot of money for eviction protection, and this is in addition to the 250,000 previously approved rental housing assistance program. We continue to strongly support such programs, which recognize that housing security is critical to both economic recovery and community health needs. Food security is another foundation for economic recovery and community health. The city has previously allocated 250,000 of ARPA monies to food security grants. That level of funding may be sufficient over the next two years, but we urge the city to, again, move expeditiously to get these monies out to the vendors who directly serve the community. We have a pot of $582,000 for Wi-Fi hotspots, laptops, and broadband internet. These are initiatives which serve the important ARPA goal of addressing inequities that have been exacerbated by the pandemic. However, the staff plan does not continue currently contemplate direct cash assistance. We'll be following up on writing in this, on our suggestions, but we believe that this program is both strongly beneficial and very feasible. It would just take a slight expansion of contract staffing to include an accounting firm to run direct cash assistance disbursements. And I practiced that four times, and it's still hard, direct cash assistance disbursements. Thank you for the opportunity to present these comments, and we look forward to continued engagements on these matters.
Thank you so much, Rebecca, and I look forward to receiving the written comments and your continued engagement. Is Priscilla still? There's Priscilla. We'll go next to Priscilla Labowitz. Priscilla, you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry. I'm sure you were all reading my lips in anticipation. I'm here to talk about equity, racial and economic equity in so, in relationship to the New Hampshire Avenue in Tacoma Park. This is a pretty segregated city in many ways, not by law certainly, but to a degree by economics. And what I want to talk about specifically is that there is no direct bus service between the Tacoma Park Recreation Center and in the 7300 block of New Hampshire Avenue and the municipal building, the library, the auditorium, and the community center. As a consequence, residents of Tacoma Park, renters and homeowners without cars cannot take classes nor arrive on time for classes unless they take two different buses to get from one place to the other. Therefore, they cannot use and borrow books from the library that they also pay for, vote in municipal elections, which are held in the municipal building, reach summer camp and sports at, say, Ed Wilhelm Field, use the teen lounge, the game room, take exercise classes and senior programs, and reach the senior room. They can't attend committee meetings in the Azalea Room and the other ones. They can't get to the police station to pay fines or to talk with the police. They can't pay bills at the city clerk's office, apply for passports at the municipal building, and attend other recreation department programs, particularly for children like the monster bash in the municipal building's parking lot. And then they could also come to city council meetings from the rec center if there were a bus. I know it is not up to Tacoma Park to provide bus service. This is something that the members of the Friends of the Tacoma Park Rec Committee have discussed with the Ride On, the county people at Ride On, and they've said that they are working on this. They're really working on it. But that was two years ago, and they, I'm sure they've been working on it and a lot of other things. So I think it's of great importance that, at a minimum, the council draft a clear and urgent resolution and communicate forcefully with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation and our representatives on the county council to establish a direct bus route between New Hampshire Avenue, Northeast West Highway, and Langley Park and the municipal center of this city.
Thank you. Thank you. That's, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Arthur David Olson. He's next on my list. Should we go to, oh, there's Arthur. Okay.
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. Tonight's agenda includes discussion of draft meeting rules and procedures. Among the draft rules is Section 2.16. The public is invited to comment at each regular weekly meeting of the council. The draft rules also include Section 2.16.5. Meetings outside of regular meetings of the council, for example, budget work sessions or work sessions on special topics, may not have time allotted for public comments, or in some instances may require signup ahead of time. City Code also addresses public comments. Section 2.04.020C says council meetings include a public comment period, during which citizens may address the council concerning issues not on the agenda for that meeting. And 2.04.020D says at each council meeting, citizens also shall be given an opportunity to address the council concerning items on the agenda. Now, since I am not a clever lawyer, I cannot read City Code as meaning anything other than calling for public comments at all meetings. No distinction is drawn between regular weekly meetings and other meetings. We live in a time when authoritarianism is on the rise in our country, including efforts to suppress voting and restrict teaching. It's a time when the institutions representing of representative democracy need strengthening. Having attended city council meetings regularly since 2013, I know firsthand the time and effort involved with public comments. I see that time and effort as a necessary price to pay for democracy. I hope the council will adopt rules and procedures that mandate public comments at all of its meetings, as called for in City Code. Failing that, I hope the council will amend City Code that clearly and accurately reflect the degree of democracy the council is willing to accept. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Reed.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is David Reed, and I'm speaking to you from my position as the president of the Long Branch Sligo Community Association and as a member of the Tacoma Stormwater Solutions. I would like to address the use of ARPA funds in my comments, which are organized in three sections: the good, the bad, and the actionable. So first, the good. I congratulate the recommendation's emphasis on protecting the most vulnerable members of our community in response to the pandemic's destabilizing impacts. I endorse efforts to ensure digital access, housing, job training, social and health services to the more vulnerable among us. Second, the bad. The federal legislation authorizes municipalities to expend resources in seven basic categories. The fifth of those seven categories is infrastructure. That includes 15 subcategories for addressing water issues. Staff recommendations for infrastructure total less than 2% of the total city allocation. In fact, it proposes funding one water project that has been on VPW's drawing boards for years. In short, there is absolutely no innovation in this recommendation package. There is no vision as to how to use these once-in-a-lifetime funds to prepare the city for the coming impacts of climate change. Third, the actionable. There are a number of important actions the city can take to make this correct this balance. One, the city should invest considerable resources in developing a comprehensive strategy for managing far greater volumes of stormwater runoff. Two, the city should commit resources to educating the citizenry about the potential impacts of climate change. Recently submitted to the city newsletter an article explaining some of the basics of stormwater runoff and flooding. After a rigorous vetting process, that article was canceled. No subsequent public educational efforts by the city on stormwater have been forthcoming. Three, last year, we conducted a survey in Long Branch Sligo to assess the breadth of stormwater problems. With 10% response from the community, we have now launched a broader stormwater survey across the city and have received over 150 responses. Two members of the city council supported that initiative, and we strongly encourage the entire council to actively support this information and educational effort. Four, yesterday, four professionals from Casey Trees met with 10 neighbors to respond to the chronic runoff problems on the steep drainage area of Poplar Elm and Sycamore. The city should support this project by contributing the existing DPW data for the stormwater and infrastructure along Popular Avenue. Strengthen concrete pipes and inlets. The DPW proposals will not come close to addressing the underlying flooding issues in this drainage area. To close, then, we ask the city council to reconsider its allocation resources by, one, funding development of a comprehensive climate and stormwater strategy, and, two, providing $25,000 for a pilot fund to test and improve water management initiatives that can model best practices across the city.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sue Miller.
Good evening, Sue Miller, Ward 3. A few years ago, public comments were officially moved from the start of the meeting, prioritizing reports and making it impossible to predict when public comments would occur as they shifted around from 7:45 to 9:30 PM. This inconsistency discourages public participation. So I'm glad that you are starting this year with a work session on procedures, and I thank you for what I understand is an intention to officially move public comments back to the start of the meeting. But I want to suggest two other changes to improve public engagement. First, Draft Procedures 2.6.1, Item 7, states that council may terminate public comments or shorten an individual public comment. Other than enforcing the three-minute limit, I am unable to recall a single instance when that seemed warranted. It seems to be a new clause, and it seems anti-democratic, and I urge you to delete it. Second, Draft Procedures 2.6.1, Item 6, states, "When a speaker asks questions during public comments, to the extent possible, responses may be provided later in the meeting, after the meeting in writing, or at a future meeting in city manager comments." This causes great frustration. People cannot listen to the city manager every week hoping for a response. And the rest of the general public wants to hear the response, not go track down the speaker and ask if they got a written response. Also, every commenter seeks a response whether or not they ask a direct question. You've seen people who are first-time commenters express bewilderment and anger at the process when there seems to be no response whatsoever. It can feel intimidating and humiliating, even for those of us who are hardened veterans here. And I know many of you have expressed frustration with this format. So I urge you to strengthen that clause as follows. Quote, "All public comment topics will be acknowledged later in the meeting, including a reference to some form of follow-up." What I'm suggesting is a one-sentence acknowledgement and follow-up plan from any one of you along the lines of, "Mr. Jones, that topic is important, and we'll be discussing it next week at council, so please tune in." Or, "I share the concerns expressed by many tonight about the property tax situation, and will ask the city manager to look into it." Or, "Ms. Bradley and Ms. Shoemaker from my ward, thank you for your new idea. I'm on the council subcommittee on public safety, and we will consider your idea at our next meeting." Such responses would create a more dignified experience for public commenters, encourage broader and deeper engagement, and make us feel more like a community, especially in these alienating times. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next, we have Wayne Sherwood.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, city manager Fox, and city staff. My name is Wayne Sherwood, and I've lived on Grand Avenue in Ward 1 since 1991. I'd like to comment on the proposals for the use of ARPA funds that are being presented by city manager Fox tonight. I've submitted some longer comments to the city clerk as an email attachment, and I hope that you'll take a look at that longer written version, too. The city manager's presentation tonight leads off with a statement that, quote, "The city's senior leadership team used the following general principles to guide decision-making for the staff-recommended spending plan." Their top priority states, number one, "In the short term, ARPA funds should be used for economic recovery, provide immediate aid for vulnerable residents and businesses, and facilitate their recovery from the pandemic." I strongly agree, and I recommend that the council should focus on providing immediate aid for vulnerable residents and businesses. I recommend that the council quickly approve the following uses of the balance of $5 million in the first tranche of ARPA funds for the following five purposes. One, provide direct financial assistance to households, $3.5 million. Provide $1,000 each in direct aid to 3,100 households living in below-market-rate rental units. Provide $1,000 each in direct aid to 400 households living in below-market-rate condo units. To administer this direct aid, the city should hire a consultant to work closely with the city, with property manager owners, and with residents. The consultant should be a firm that has experience administering housing programs or other types of payments assistance programs. Two, provide assistance to property owner-managers who administer low- to moderate-income who administer low-to-moderate-income housing properties in Tacoma Park to help them address urgent housing needs such as deferred maintenance and bringing properties up to code, five hundred thousand dollars. Three, mental health planning, one hundred and fifty thousand. Hire a consultant to prepare a plan for establishing a mental health unit within Tacoma Park City Government outside the police department. Four, broadband improvements, five hundred thousand. Five, planning for distributed community learning centers, one hundred and fifty thousand. Prepare a plan to create a network of community learning centers located near places where people, both children and adults, live so they do not have to travel long distances to get to the centralized library location. Take advantage of spaces and housing developments where possible. The sum of the above five items is four point eight million. I recommend that the city council adopt an expedited schedule so the council can approve the use of all remaining first-tranche funds by no later than February second. The city council can take more time in the future to consider how it would like to see the balance of the ARPA funds used, including for long-term projects such as infrastructure improvements. That concludes my remarks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you, and thank you for sending your comments earlier today, Mr. Sherwood. And our last public commenter this evening is Mary Jane Machuie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm on my iPad and you might hear my son's got the TV on the background because I couldn't get it on my iPad. The meeting I had to, it was very difficult for me to get here, so took me quite a lot of thinking. Anyways, thank you, and I wanted to say a shout-out to all the school bus drivers. I really feel for you. I mean, you all are doing a, I mean, you all deserve big raises. Anyways, I would like to ask that the COVID money goes to these two groups: low-income Black Americans and low-income people with disabilities that affect their brains. I consider them the most vulnerable group of all. And I really, really helped you, helped them. And a few other things, odds and ends, we moved. I hate to complain about it, but there's times I almost hit by a car and I get stressed out driving sometimes. There's several intersections where there's vegetation and it blocks your view, so you can't safely, you just sort of pray. I go, I'll go, nobody's gonna hit me. And one of those is getting out of the parking lot there on Eastern Avenue, up Eastern Avenue. And Ritchie Avenue and Ponty Branch, they finally put a stop sign, but I mean, there were accidents there, and please do something about that. And I'd like to, small and other small things, an overhang, please, for those kids and adults who play at that half-court basketball court outside the community center. I'm taking several classes there and I noticed it's used quite a lot. Why can't you all put a covering for it so they can play there when it's raining or whatever? I just really recommend it. And please, please build an accessory dwelling unit for my son. Please, it's just, it's hard to live in a very small house with one bathroom. So, please. And as far as the reparations, I suggest to give them to Black Americans and disabled Americans who make less than sixty thousand a year. That's just my suggestion. But anyways, thank you all, and you all have a, and please, please explain to us who's running for council and so forth. I know you're running for council, but I don't know who else is running for Ward Five or at-large or whatever. It's sort of confusing to me, so if you could explain it maybe better, I'll know what council person you're running for. But thank you. Good luck. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Thank you. Happy New Year and thank you for coming this evening. That concludes our public comments this evening and we will now move to council comments. And let's see who would like to start us off this evening. Don't be shy. I have Councilwoman Kostic first.
Hey, everyone. Happy New Year, as Councilmember Seaman said. Great to see everyone again and just want to thank all of the public commenters. It's great to have people come out to our first meeting of the year and really helpful to receive the thoughts on all of the subjects and particularly since we're having in-depth discussions on ARPA funds and the council procedures, the feedback is particularly useful, so thank you. I just have a couple of updates and I'm sure I'm forgetting something since we've been on break for so long, but just wanted to let people know that we had a meeting about a week ago in the neighborhood surrounding the Lincoln Carroll intersection. We've been talking a lot about safety at this intersection and concerns about crashes there. And so we're continuing to work on that and I will share more information as we get it and would love to dig in a little more with Public Works about maybe what alternatives we could look at there. But I do want to really give a shout-out and thanks to the police department and to Public Works for the data that they've pulled on this, the traffic counts that have been done. Thank you to Public Works for looking into the situation with parking and what more can be done on the curve between Maple and Carol as well. So just really, that's been very helpful and hopefully we can continue to discuss this and see what changes we can make there. I also had the opportunity the past two days to take part in listening in on the community sessions related to redistricting in Tacoma Park. I want to thank the city staff for organizing those and the residents who came out. It was useful to hear from people and get those presentations and see people's questions. I do want to really encourage residents to reach out and share your thoughts, both with the consultants and with the council. I don't feel like I've really heard from that many residents at this point in time from Ward Three and it's an important topic, so I really hope that people will reach out and share your thoughts on that. And then just, I'm sure that probably the city manager will mention it, but just want to remind people again that there's the community meeting next week on the ARPA funds, which is really important to engage in. And then finally, just a reminder that I hope you all are staying safe with the Omicron variant and I know a lot of people are getting sick and testing positive and just hope everyone's doing well and want to say I'm thinking about everybody during this hard time.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Dibala. Councilwoman Dibala, you're still on mute.
Okay, let's try that again. Happy New Year and it's good to be back and I'm glad to see everybody and thanks for those who commented. I will follow up with Mary Jane Machuie on her questions about county council and other changes along those lines. Reiterating of what councilmember Kostic said, if you can get vaccinated, do so. If you can get boosted, do that. Wear your mask around others because it's rough out there right now. And we want everyone to be safe. But on a more beef note, Martin Luther King Day is Monday and in this community, there's a tradition of community service on that day and there are two projects: outdoors with masks, safely distanced from each other. One is at Tacoma Woods, meeting at Darwin Avenue at ten o'clock. Both are ten to twelve. Meeting at Darwin Avenue at ten o'clock, Darwin Avenue, yes. It is a cleanup of that area. The other is a special event at Dorothy's Woods to do invasives work. Twenty folks have signed up for that by special procedure through the city manager's office and thank you very much, city manager, for making that possible. That's also ten to twelve. And I'm looking forward to it if it doesn't snow. If it snows, we can all just stay home. It's also must-be-traffic-safety-week, month, the last few weeks. So we had a couple of things going on in Ward Two. The resolution on Auburn Avenue of some of the details of the speed bump locations that we approved in the fall. So we had a meeting in mid-December on that. And just last night, to let you all know, a meeting on traffic calming for Lower Prince George's Avenue, the stretch from New Hampshire to Elm, which is one of a number of cut-through streets in Ward Two. And the the meeting, the vast majority of the well-attended meeting, vast majority of people supported the use of speed bumps there. So I suspect that'll be coming up for public hearing late February. Just a brief, two more things briefly. The mayor may be talking more about this. State legislature started today and the state legislative subgroup for this council started. Gosh, was it only yesterday? It feels like so long ago.
This morning. It was just this morning.
Was this just this morning?
Literally this morning.
Literally just this morning. Yeah, there's a lot going on there and we'll get back to you on all that. But we're kicking off. And on climate, just to catch you all up over the last few weeks, the county council's work group on environment has met a couple, three times on county legislation for building performance standards. That will be relevant when we talk about the ARPA money later tonight, so I thought I'd just put that out there. And that's it for me for now. Thank you so much. Good to be back.
Councilwoman Seercy. No, we can't hear you.
All right, can't hear me. Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm gonna get back into the swing of things soon enough. So first, happy new year and I hope everyone had a wonderful and prosperous break. And so then we can kind of jump in and I'm gonna continue on the on the traffic calming train. So the New Hampshire Gardens Community Association was slated to have a meeting tonight to discuss aspects of some traffic calming requests. However, half of the neighborhood is out without internet access right now due to Verizon FiO's outage that's impacted the community. So the Neighborhood Association is planning to reschedule and as soon as we have listservs and things that folks can email, there will be a rescheduling email sent out to the group. So just wanted to let folks know that that meeting that was scheduled for today at seven will be rescheduled. Also, just want to say congratulations. We did get word during the break that the MHP secured and closed in their financing for the Hillwood Manor Apartments renovation project and this is really, really huge, not just for MHP and for the low-to-moderate-income residents that live there, but it's also big for the city because it's one of the first times where we've done a substantial renovation on apartment buildings in the city, so we're excited about that. So there definitely will be continued work between city staff and MHP on that project going forward, so I'm super excited and looking forward to that. And I think, in the interest of time, I think that's all I have. Again, I want to thank all of the folks that have sent emails and messages and came out tonight to talk about the ARPA funds. I'm learning and thinking through so many different options based on all of the feedback that you all have provided and the articles of what's happening all across the country and how folks are using these dollars. So definitely, please, continue to keep those thoughts and those ideas coming. And that's all I got. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor, and happy new year to everybody. Welcome back. Just to reiterate what some of my colleagues said in terms of the Omicron variant and so on, I do know a number of people now, friends and neighbors and relatives who've gotten sick and fortunately, none of them have been hospitalized, but some have been laid up for a while. So it is a serious matter and it does appear that those who are vaccinated at least are much less likely to have serious cases, so I urge everybody to do that. I'm glad that my colleague, Councilmember Dibala, mentioned the MLK Day projects and I do plan to go to the Tacoma Woods from ten to twelve on Saturday by the committee, I guess, as she said, on Darwin Avenue. And I encourage people to meet there and look forward to that. With regard to redistricting, I wasn't able to participate in or at least observe the two sessions this week. And it's not a hundred percent clear to me whether people are fine and don't really care what district they end up in or whether they're not aware of it. Obviously, if it's the former, then that's fine, but my sense is there are people who do care about it and so I really encourage anybody who's watching to check the redistricting site on the city webpage and see what you might think about some of the options that are being discussed. And I am going to be having a redistricting discussion, Ward One-based redistricting discussion next week. I'll be sending out separate information about that. Just a couple of other things I wanted to mention. There are other things I wanted to mention. This came up previously, I think I sent an email about it, but there's been a lot going on. So we used to have on the monthly city newsletter some information on the front page about where to find the translations into the other languages and that seems to not be there anymore and I'm just curious what's behind that and maybe if there's some way we can restore that in some form, so that's one thing. Secondly, reference was made to stormwater and we'll be discussing that in the context of ARPA, but separate stormwater matter is the pending need still to get corrections to some of the stormwater maps that were off and to ensure that before the next cycle comes around again, that those are fixed and people who ended up paying improper amount can have that fixed. So I just encourage staff, not that they're not working on lots of other things, to take a look at that. And then the other one was, I have put in a request and again, there's a lot happening for a meeting for residents on the one section of Upper Maple that has yet to have the sidewalks installed. There's a question around the stormwater impact of that and an interest on the part of residents to have a meeting with staff before the project goes forward. So if those three things could be checked on. And I do appreciate the comments from residents, in particular, Ms. Woodings on behalf of the Presbyterian Church and Mr. Sherwood and I. And I look forward to having that set of issues discussed this evening when we talk about the ARPA funding. And I appreciate also Ms. Labavitz's comments about the transportation between the two sites in the city and that's something that I'll do what I can to look into separately, but I think it's an important. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I would like to wish everyone a happy new year. I would also like to thank staff for all the work they did to provide the benches and tables at the library. I think that's going to be a great addition. Would like to thank Ms. Campbell, A.J. Campbell, for all our work on making that happen and Mr. Fox for pulling it all together. I would ask staff if they can think about the comments provided by Ms. Miller. I think there should be at least some thought put into if we can consider some of the ideas that she presented this evening. I would like to thank Wayne Sherwood and the representative, I can't remember her name, with the Presbyterian Church. I work with PCUSA, the national organization in my day job now and they do a lot of great work. I agree that we need to get cash payments into individuals' hands as fast and as much as possible. I like the idea of a thousand dollars to each household. That's something that's doable. There are a lot of people in this community and communities around the country that are really hurting. There are a lot of people in this community and communities around the country that are really hurting. Uh, and then finally, I sent uh, a note to, to some other members of council. It's my ideas that uh, some priorities that I want to uh, look into over uh, the next council year. And I look forward to discussing those uh, as the months go forward. Thank you.
Alright, uh, a couple of things. Um, to me again, Happy New Year. We, uh, our last meeting in the fall, in November, uh, we had a presentation by Adventist Healthcare on providing um, uh, some primary care and mental health services in the community. Uh, we had a number of questions and a subgroup of the city council, um, Councilwoman DiBala, Kovar and myself with city staff will be meeting with Adventist Healthcare to kind of work through some of those questions and their proposal and come back to council. With uh, with some of those answers, um, and hopefully in less than a month or so, um, if the meetings go. So we'll work on that. Um, in addition, this week on Tuesday, I believe, I testified on behalf of the city uh, and for the county council regarding tax duplication. And it looks like twenty twenty-two is going to be the year that uh, we will actually see some real movement um, and resolution to some of these issues. Um, again, I want to really thank our deputy city manager for all her work on this. But we're, we're very, very close. Um, and also I want to do a shout out to Gene Capps, Randy Marks, Jared Hughes, and a number of other residents who have been um advocating on this uh, the last year or so. In addition, um, we sent a letter to the county executive and the county council regarding um some um expedited bill on the police accountability boards. This was part of a legislation that um, moved in Annapolis last year in which uh, police accountability boards were going to be established. Even though we have our own police department under the state legislation, we come under um, the county for the establishment of these boards. And the county executive uh, put together legislation looking at the um, composition of what these boards may look like for consideration by the county council. Unfortunately, Tacoma Park, Rockville, and Gaithersburg, even though we have our own um, police departments, were not um, asked for input on those bills. So um, we each testified um, yesterday, um, and in particular, uh, Mayor uh, Judd um, uh, from uh, Gaithersburg provided more detailed uh, comments on the bill. And I've circulated a letter to uh, my colleagues on the council that I uh, would like you to uh, give me any comments on um, by the end of the week. Uh, because the next public hearing on that is um, January eighteenth, the same night that we're having our um, ARPA town hall. Um, so we can't uh, give public comments on that. So if you could look at that and we will submit that. Um, as Councilwoman DiBala said, today, the legislative session started in Annapolis. Um, and the subcommittee of Councilmember DiBala, Kovar, and myself met with city staff and our Annapolis uh lobbyists to go over the bills that have been filed already. And uh, we will be providing uh, more frequent updates um, during our council meetings on that. Um, one other thing I want to um, just have folks note on our agenda. One thing we're doing new this year, we're trying out is you'll see on the agenda items in parentheses after each one. The person, our department, who will be presenting or is responsible um, for that item. We're hoping, um, working with staff, um, we are hoping that this way it will provide the city council and members of the public a little more information about the agenda item. Um, and also just so we're all conscious of the staff who will be um, joining our meetings um, each Wednesday night. In addition, today was the first uh, COG, um, Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Board Meeting. Um, I am serving as the vice chair of the board uh, this year and um, thank everyone who has I agreed to continue working on the different committees, particularly Councilwoman Kostick, who is working on the transportation planning board because I think um, that and the COG board probably are the heaviest lifts um, on, on those things. So thank you for your continuing that work. Um, and just as my colleagues mentioned, um, with the Omicron variant and COVID hitting many people, um, particularly our own uh, city staff and everything. We just, you know, we just thank everyone for their patience, um, and their, and providing everyone with grace as we're going through this difficult time. Um, things may just take a little bit longer to answer questions, um, do things and I just appreciate everyone uh, taking that into consideration. And I think that is all I have for this evening and I will turn it over to our city manager, uh, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh, welcome back, council. Happy New Year to you and, and members of the community that's watching this evening. Uh, just a couple of updates. I'm not going to touch on uh, the MLK holiday, uh, because Councilmember DiBala did. Just to say that there are many days of service going on this weekend uh, for everyone to take advantage of. Um, I want to recognize uh, staff and just, just say thank you to staff. It has been a very grueling and tough fall. And this past week, we had to deal with several snowstorms and the weather itself. Uh, we had a lot of operational challenges uh, throughout the organization. Uh, but the staff did a ominous job and uh, presented themselves and provided the service to the community. Um, and so I just want to give kudos to staff and thank them for what they do for the organization and community each and every day. Because last week was challenging with the winter weather. Uh, I also want to just give a shout out. I'm not going to go into too much right now. I'll wait to the presentation, but you've been hearing me say for the last several months that we have, we'll be hiring a ARPA manager. We now have a ARPA manager and we'll be uh, presenting her tonight uh, to say a few words uh, before mayor and council. Uh, I want to recognize the finance team. Uh, this is the fourth consecutive year that they've received the GFWA distinguished budget presentation award uh, for their fiscal year, for our fiscal year twenty-two budget uh, that they were, would develop. And so I just wanted to thank all of the finance staff as well as Deputy City Manager Jessica Clark uh, who helped uh, lead our budget process. And then lastly, um, I would say that uh, HCD, we have released the RFP for the Public Space Management Plan. Uh, so that RFP is on the street and went out last week. Uh, and people can find that on the website. Uh, and then uh, just one follow-up, I would say that uh, Councilmember Kovar, uh, you should get a response from Public Works as far as the projects on sidewalks on Maple. That project is moved forward and I believe that staff will be meeting with individual uh, property owners and uh, talking about the, the safety and equity concerns that we have along that corridor. But you should receive a uh, update from uh, either the director or a member of staff. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Um, and I think with that, um, we will now turn to the presentation of staff recommended spending plan for the American Rescue Plan Act, um, ARPA funding. And I will, I think, turn it back to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If, John, if you will bring up the presentation. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the community. Before you this evening, uh, we will be presenting our staff recommended ARPA spending plan. Um, and I want to give a thank you to the community, to council for your continued support and partnership as we collectively work together to make the city of Tacoma Park a resilient community post-pandemic. And I want to thank our dedicated and very resourceful staff for their commitment and hard work in assisting and meeting the three goals that we laid out in the beginning of this process. I want to touch on those goals in a few moments. Uh, but before I do that, um, I'll be sharing a high-level and brief presentation this evening. Um, but before that, I want to just introduce our ARPA manager, uh, Ms. Vernae Martin. Uh, and allow her a few moments to share some words with uh, the community and council. Ms. Martin, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Alrighty. Well, hello everyone and Happy New Year. Um, and Ma- Madam Mayor and, and city council members. Um, I'm really uh, looking forward to working with you all, um, and working with the city manager and the deputy city manager um, to uh, implement the council-approved um, projects uh, moving forward. Um, I've had a chance to talk to a few of the council members um, this week and I have some others scheduled for uh, tomorrow as well. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to have a chance to chat with each one of you and learn more about what's going on in your wards and, and what your priorities are. So I will be working very closely with the city manager and the deputy city manager to implement um, the projects that are approved by the council um, using ARPA funds. Um, primarily, I will also be wanting to make sure that the community is kept informed about the projects and project activities as well as being engaged in the process as a whole. So again, thank you so much and thank you for the uh, opportunity to speak this evening, uh, Mr. Fox, and looking forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, and we look forward to your service and leading us through the implementation when we get there. Next slide, please. Uh, it's, it's been a few months, uh, but I just wanted to highlight our allocation, uh, received principal staff used for the development of the spending plan and a reminder of what the eligible uses are. Um, one of the principles that we use was priority-based budgeting, um, which uh, is usually a unique and innovative approach used by many local governments across the country uh, to be able to match available resources with community priorities, to be able to provide councils that uh, to, to help them uh, lead to better informed decisions. And it typically would engage the community in, in the budgeting process that allows for more transparency. So overall, uh, this type of process would evaluate the importance of individual programs and services rather than the entire department. And um, we use a smidgen of uh, PBB uh, to help us get to this place. Staff is working on posting the full export of all proposals from the ARPA database, which will include scores for each individual project, um, and the criteria that we use, which you'll be able to find on the ARPA webpage that we have posted. And I'll share that uh, this evening. Next page, next slide. I also want to share that our spending plan uh, has been totally focused on the interim final rule uh, from the US Treasury. The final rule from the US Treasury was, was rolled out. The final rule was rolled out last week and it will take effect on April first. But the plan that we're presenting to you, Mayor and Council and the community is based off of the interim final rule. And our ARPA manager, Ms. Martin, that uh, just spoke moments ago, will be sharing more details on the final rule. Which is basically a four hundred thirty-seven-page guidance uh, that we all received on Friday of late last week. Uh, and she'll be sharing more details on um, what we can use uh, the ARPA funds on, we can't use what's uh, over the next few weeks. And as we are planning for a resilient Tacoma Park, we wanted to provide a balanced, strategic, and intentional recommended staff plan, taking in consideration uh, what we heard from you, Mayor and Council on immediate short needs, short-term needs, long-term needs, how do we marry both of those together, look at transformative needs for the organization and community that would also take into consideration and center the council's strategic priorities, but also centering the residents and community and centering equity. Next slide. This slide shares our goals for the final recommended spending plan. As a reminder, in November, we created a database using our partner, Resource X uh, for a total of fifty-five proposals. Forty proposals were on community needs, fifteen proposals focused on organizational and operational needs that equated to forty million. Uh, the plan before you unite uh, has been drilled down and we have twenty projects total. For our staff plan, we scored project concepts. We did not score requests for financial support for individual entities, nonprofits, partners in the community. We are not publishing who submitted which concepts, um, but those who have submitted concepts, you should see your suggestions reflected in the process. You may have a concept and it was scored or reflected in several different concepts. And then the actual database that you'll see on our website, on our ARPA page, the scoring committees view department, resident, council as the proposing parties depending on the proposal, um, but it's not any specific names of any entities. So for example, uh, a entity, uh, Fox and Associates submitted three proposals suggesting different models of business support for ARPA through our ARPA email. Those were entered into the database distinctly or consolidated with other projects that overlap and scored in that concept. Or businesses citywide, but we did not score a direct grant to that entity. We would recommend a workforce development project, but we would have, but we have not called out potential beneficiaries and individuals who would be getting certain funding. Um, that will come after council actually adopts a spending plan for ARPA. And I will not cover each project over the next couple of slides, uh, but I just want to give council and the community just a high-level uh, view of details on some of the projects. And uh, staff acknowledges that we're going to have to develop a stronger community engagement effort for each of the recommended projects before you this evening. Um, we're going to have to do our best to reach everyone and including the voices that sometimes go unheard and those that are part of the vulnerable or disproportionately impacted communities by using every mechanism that we can to engage the community. Once we have the council adopted our spending plan, staff would be able to work on the implementation of each project and be able to share more as it relates to the level of community reach, a specific project that would have happened. Uh, we will also continue to use our social vulnerability index data, our census data from the uh, American Community Survey that we've been using, and also our internally-built data explorer. Uh, thanks to our colleague, uh, Dan Powers, that we released last fall. And the projects, once council approves, the staff recommended spending plan would then be developed into a work plan that we would work with our ARPA manager, who would develop the appropriate project management and tracking necessary for each project. There are projects that we would move forward quickly based on urgent needs. Other projects, we would also incorporate into departmental work plans. And I am very confident that we'll be able to get these funds out the door and expensed by twenty twenty-six. Staff is also evaluating the additional funding that may exist now or soon to be available in the future. We already know about the infrastructure bill. That was already uh, passed by Congress. We know about the Build Back Better legislation that could be passed at some time in the future. Uh, but we're also looking at other state opportunities or other opportunities that exist out there that some of the ARPA funds or projects could be repurposed with those dollars versus ARPA funds. Next slide, please. We're focused on assisting vulnerable residents and I will call attention to the social services partnerships, the one point two million that we have outlined. We have not selected any entities, as I stated, for ARPA financial support. We have only put a one point two We have only put a $1.2 million placeholder for partnerships, which opens up several possibilities for nonprofit RFP with different tracks or expansion of existing programs. A potential RFP would be focused on getting nonprofits to assist with reaching vulnerable communities. The other proposed funding is focused on meeting immediate needs in the community as well. Next slide. On this slide, we're focused on funding for equity and community prosperity projects. I call your attention to the multifamily rehabilitation assistance that's focused on assisting property owners to address housing quality concerns. We will provide loans and/or grants to homeowners or multifamily property owners as an incentive for rehabilitation for those who own affordable housing units. The other projects listed, I call attention to, is the Business Incubator, which is it will achieve a permanent home for the crossroads farmer's market and community kitchen. This project will be a transformational project to that area and provide employment opportunities for residents unemployed or underemployed. Next slide, please. This look, this slide is focused on our community anchors. And I call attention to the first project outlined, there are $2 million for the library. The library is not only an economic development and community anchor, it is a safe place for people to congregate and meet from all walks of life. Due to inflation and supply chain issues related to the pandemic and the original bond funding, it's not sufficient. That's why we have the $2 million there. We're ready to move forward now that a lot of hurdles that we went through, regulatory processes like permitting and the mandatory referral, we've crossed that bridge. Council last fall approved the construction manager contract. That contract has been signed. The construction manager now is on board, and will be completing a constructibility review and looking at value engineering assessment. And then we'll be rolling out the RFP. This project is significant, but will also improve our service capability and accessibility to vulnerable communities. This is a significant project for this community, and we look forward to trying to move this along. The other project I'll highlight on this slide is the Maple Ave Complete Street project. This project, or Maple Ave, will help. It is focused on the low-to-moderity income renters, but it will help and have a focus towards increasing the equity and the safety to residents loan that corridor. Next slide. This slide is focused on our fiscal sustainability and support of our frontline workers, who have performed in-person essential work during the pandemic, focused on both our Public Works and Police Department. And you heard from testimony tonight from one of our workers in the Public Works Department about this here. In our plan, we are recommending a contingency amount, as listed here, that we would recommend not using until at least the last year or the year and a half of the plan to address unforeseen issues that arise. And the third project that I'll just call out on this slide here is, is really important, is the revenue replacement as calculated by the city. When we calculated through the GFOA ARPA revenue replacement calculation, the maximum was over 4.4, four and a half million for the last fiscal year. As we're reviewing the new rule, final rule that came out on Friday, it allows jurisdictions to accrest up to 10 million in revenue replacement. And cities and jurisdictions can forego using the ARPA revenue loss calculation. More review is necessary, and staff is doing that review. And we're working with our new ARPA manager, who will provide more context over the next few years, over the next few weeks, as we get deeper into reading the 437-page final guidance. Next slide, please. Staff met our recovery resiliency goals that I shared earlier and believe that our staff recommended plan is thoughtful, intentional, equitable, and balanced. We have 50% of the projects that are direct investment to the vulnerable communities. 50% investment is needed for capital improvements, public infrastructure, operational support, and fiscal sustainability for the organization. And my leadership team has done a great job over the last six months investing the necessary time to review, to evaluate, and to prioritize projects to develop a staff recommended plan. And specifically, I want to thank our entire senior leadership team and call out the strong leadership of Deputy City Manager Jessica Clark and Dan Powers from the City Managers' Office for their leadership throughout this process, where we're able to present a very good, balanced spending plan to you, Mayor and Council. I also want to thank Ms. Martin, our new ARPA manager, because she jumped right in. She rolled her sleeves up, and she hit the ground running and, and really has provided certain insights into a lot of the guidance that we needed. Next slide. This is the same matrix that we used, that I shared back in November. And the matrix was designed to reward projects that will have the most bang-for-the-buck projects that are multi-dimensional and have lasting impact for the organization and the community as a whole. So you've already seen this matrix already. Next slide. On this slide here, these are updated numbers from the last time, the last few times that we shared this with you, Mayor and Council and the community. Please note that the fiscal year 22 July budget amendment omitted one year of salary cost and benefits for the ARPA personnel. So a $745,000 increase will be added to the final spending plan in February to reflect those costs. But we wanted to share this with you so you can actually see the updated numbers we have to work with. Next slide, please. I'm very, very excited. Staff has done a great job getting us to the point. We do have the webpage up for ARPA. So if you go to Tacoma Park, Maryland, MD.gov, on the front page, you click on our initiatives. On your initiatives, you just click on ARPA, and our ARPA page will come up. So we just rolled this out today. So you can go and take a look at not only our plan, but you can also take a look at another plan that we have, has all the projects that we started with and how we actually rate it as a staff. And it has a little bit more context through the matrix that I showed a few slides back. Next slide. This slide is just showing the public comment opportunities over the next five weeks for the community, where next week we'll be back here for 6:00 to 8:00 PM, having a community meeting, and then subsequent, next day, we'll have a council work session on ARPA. So there's five weeks of opportunities for the community to be able to provide their feedback on this plan, as we've heard earlier tonight, through community testimony. Next slide. So if anyone else has any questions or anything that they need to get to us, or they, after they have heard this presentation, reviewed the information on the website, if you have any questions, comments, please continue to email us at arpa@tacoma park MD.gov, and we'll be able to respond accordingly. With that, Madam Mayor, I turn it back over to you and Council.
Great. Thank you for that terrific presentation. Very much appreciated, and I encourage everyone to go to the website. I did have a chance to look at the, the document you referenced that scored each of the projects that you discussed, and it was very useful to see that. So thank you for providing that. See, I have a hand raised already. Councilmember Smith wants to kick us off.
I would just like to first say thank you, Mr. Fox and your team. You guys gave an excellent report. The professionalism is off the charts. It was well worth the wait. I would, you know, be willing to just take the first five on the, the list that you have that have the highest ratings and get started on those. I, I, I am kind of conflicted on our, our timetable, the timeline we have. We need to get these projects out there as soon as possible. One thing, a couple of things that I didn't see that I, I hope that staff can consider is, one, how do we get cash into people's hands? There are a lot of people that are hurting right now. The pullback on direct cash assistance from the federal government is, is really hurting families in our community. There might be some more funding from the feds, but the Republicans don't want to talk about it until the Biden administration actually shows how much money has been spent from ARPA and CARES. So that, that might be a few weeks, a few months before those numbers actually presented. The other thing is I, and that's firsthand information. Another thing that I would like to see is money coming, going to a purchase of KN95 or 95 masks, so that we can give them to residents, especially those residents that live in apartment buildings, may not be able to afford the more expensive, but much better mask. Omicron is, is very dangerous. And if we do not do everything in our ability as local government, then it's going to hurt a lot of community members. But Mr. Fox, well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Smith. And does anyone else have any general, I thought, tonight we could do general comments and areas, as just as Councilmember Smith did, that we would like the staff to either follow up on or consider before our next work session? Next, I have Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and I might repeat a few things that my colleague mentioned. But first off, I do want to say I appreciate all the work that went into this report by the city manager and the rest of the staff. I was someone who was urging us to get money out the door as soon as possible. And I still would have liked that, but I can see that this is a very comprehensive approach, and I certainly appreciate everything that went into it. It's very thoughtful, and I'm glad, glad to have it. And I look forward to taking a deeper look at the scoring and so on that was done. So, so thanks very much for, for, for all of that. I have the impression that it would probably make the most sense for us with the deadline of early in mid-February to concentrate initially on projects that are targeted to those who are most significantly affected by COVID, COVID or risk for it, and take a little more time on some of the others. And so I'm thinking mostly about those that are really urgent and immediate. And some of the examples would be the mental health and possibly the, the housing assistance, certainly the eviction piece. I personally would like to see us devote more money to nutrition assistance. And I, I think, you know, to, to work harder to get what we've already allocated out the door and into the hands of organizations that can do it. But I see a few buckets in terms of the, of the projects, those, as I mentioned, that are for immediate urgent need, and we should try to get those out right away. There are some others which seem like good projects, but are less pressing. And then there are still others that seem like good projects, but maybe have a lot of questions around them. My concern is that if we try to do all 19 of them, or whatever the number is, all at the same time with a level of vetting and analysis that's required, that feels a little bit like a recipe for not getting any of it done, as opposed to saying, okay, let's, let's get the initial ones, if we can reach an agreement on that, and get those out, and then, then continue the discussion on an ongoing basis. And in particular, since we only have half the money at the moment to, that we have direct access to, there's an argument to be made that let's see if we can use most of that. And then when the second tranche is under consideration, we could take a little more time to do it. So a few other things that I just wanted to mention more specific. When it comes to stormwater, one of the things we have in our regular budget, just the annual budget, not the, not ARPA, is some funds set aside for a study that would be done with an outside contractor to analyze some of the key stormwater challenges and difficulties that we have here in the city. And I think if we could get that project underway, once we get those findings, then we could, I think, look at using some of the second tranche funds for potentially some stormwater infrastructure projects. But I wouldn't want that not to be somewhere on the list, even if it's, even if it's further down. So, so that's something I was anticipating when I see a reference to, and I encourage us to do that. As far as the library goes, maybe we could get a brief explanation before we're done tonight of this distinction between the revenue replacement money and the regular. I guess it's all from the ARPA fund, but if Treasury agreed, then we would have more flexibility in how it would be used. Does that, does someone just want to field that one real quick before I finish up here?
Yes, Ms. Martin or Ms. Clark, you want to take that? The revenue replacement funds?
Sure. So our finance director estimated that we could get up before the final rule came out. And I know Ms. Smith is, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin is going to talk more about that at next week's work session in terms of the final rule actually had a provision that is, really changes the amount of revenue loss that we can do, that we can submit for. We estimated using the original formula the Treasury provided that we could request up to about four and a half million in revenue loss. Now, it's not a situation where we get a payment back from Treasury. So as you all know, we've already received the eight, the full 8.7 million first tranche. And so it's the way that you report revenue loss is you show, originally you would show the, the calculation of the four and a half million. And at the same time that you report the calculation showing the loss, you also tell Treasury which projects that you are allocating it towards. So we should, the council and, and staff, we should earmark certain projects that will be from the revenue loss approval allocation. So essentially, within our ARPA fund, we'll have kind of two pots of money, the regular direct spending and then the amount that was approved for revenue loss. And so in our spending plan, we earmarked the facility's renovation because we figured that that would be a, a good use of the, the broader definition that revenue loss allows, because the revenue loss pot that we would get approved does have more flexibility in that it can be used for general government services. But we have a lot of flexibility in terms of which projects that we earmark for that revenue loss reimbursement. And Ms. Martin will speak more to that next week.
Thanks. I appreciate that. And do we know how quickly? I mean, I guess we don't know for sure, but do we anticipate how quickly we would hear whether Treasury was approving that?
That's a good question. Yeah, I, I, I know that the first reporting deadline is in April, and I, I don't think any of us know yet how quickly Treasury will be able to work through and process the submissions from jurisdictions around the US. But I think that remains to be seen, but we hope it's, it's quickly. I think that the projects that we earmarked also could, could wait a few months. So that, that's something to keep in mind in terms of selecting which project should be earmarked earmarked for the revenue loss amount.
When it comes to the library, for example, we don't know for sure, or we won't know for sure what the potential true cost is until the bids come back from.
Exactly. And that was one of the. Exactly. And that was one of the projects we earmarked.
But do we have some further indication of of the cost changes? Or is it we're more projecting at this point, what we're anticipating may have changed?
So the last cost update that we got was in August, and we saw that a lot of the just materials, the cost had doubled. But yeah, the last cost estimate that we had that we used for this proposal was was from August. So there's certainly been additional inflation in the interim.
Thanks. I appreciate just and just two other questions. I know this is just just the beginning, Mayor, and I don't want to take up too much time. Since we're looking at the potential for sending out funds to people, one of the challenges that lower income, lower income people often face is that they don't have bank accounts. And so I want to make sure that within all of this, the unbanked challenge is somehow addressed. And I know there were agencies like the FDIC and others that have initiatives aimed at that. But I'd be concerned that unless we can find a way to address that point, even if we provide or approve making some of these funds available, it might be still a big challenge to get it to the people who need it. So I just make that point. I am interested in seeing what we might be able to do in terms of the direct financial assistance that was suggested by Wayne Sherwood and others. I'd like to at least have that as as something we could take a look at. And then the last thing I had, just one question, I don't know who could answer this. It looked to me, and it's a lot to absorb, so maybe I'm missing something, but it looked to me as if the list of nineteen projects isn't just the nineteen top scoring projects. It does appear that some that rank lower were included and some that ran higher may not have been. And if I'm right about that, I'm wrong, just telling I'm wrong. If I'm right about that, maybe someone could say something a little bit about how that was done.
Sure. So I can take that. So as we outlined in the report, we weren't totally married to the final score, particularly because this was our first time through priority based budgeting. So we wanted the the final score as a reference point for sort of a final, you know, feasibility discussion with our senior staff. For the most part, you'll see that the twenty projects are from the highest ranked scores. There were instances where some of the scores had the same score. So we had like six projects that scored a fifty-six, for example. So in that instance, we did, you know, choose based on feasibility and and discussions with senior staff in kind of the final weeks of our our process after the the ranking had occurred.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Cerci.
Good evening. I just first want to compliment the team. This is a very well written report. And it hits on all of the right pieces. So most of my comments are more around timing, ideas around dollar amounts and whether or not they're they're right, or whether or not we need to move some things around. And then, you know, kind of thinking through what some of the potential gaps in terms of coverage may be. So one question I do have, and thank you so much for, and I know we're going to get more of this next week, and you kind of walk us through how the reimbursement for lost revenues and all of that stuff will work. I am still a little confused in terms of the final timing of when the projects have to be. So the funds have to be obligated by twenty twenty-four, but the work has to be done. And everything has to be spent by twenty twenty-six, right? So that for me raised a couple of questions around, you know, it put me more in the place of no, especially for these infrastructure projects that will likely take longer. We need to, we may need to make decisions about them sooner in order to get those contracts out, in order for the work to be done and complete, and all of the funds obligated by twenty twenty-six. So one of the things that would be helpful is for to kind of put some timing to some of these. I saw that some of the projects, for example, the mental health counselors, it's a two year pilot. So it's kind of clear if we obligate those funds in twenty twenty-two, it's a two year project by twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five-ish, we should have the results. That means we probably won't be able to do too too much beyond that, because that means we would only have like another year to obligate and do work in order to meet the deadline. So for some of these projects, it would be helpful to kind of have that sense of timing. Because I think that also will help with understanding why we may be choosing to to, quite frankly, put ARPA dollars towards projects that are, a lot of the legwork has been done already in order to ensure that those funds get obligated and and that work gets done in this four year window, if that makes sense. Another thing, so that's that's the one piece that was just kind of at the forefront of our mind. It's thank you both so much for explaining how we have to obligate the actual lost revenue dollars. In my brain, I hadn't, I thought, oh, lost revenue, it should go back and kind of circle back through our general fund, but apparently not. So and so and so for those projects that are earmarked for those lost revenues, it would be helpful to know whether or not those projects also still have to be done within the timeframe that has been allotted for those original dollars, right? So if Treasury takes eight months to give you a decision on whether or not these are approved, like, are they offering any kind of extended timeline for those projects that get earmarked under that those dollars because we're waiting on that approval? So that would be something that would be helpful to know as well, if you all don't know it already.
They they do have to be used by or encumbered by twenty twenty-four as well.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So we're talking about a tight timeline because by the time we get all these contracts out, and then by the time we get this money spent, and then we get people working. Yeah, it's.
Yeah. And I will just highlight for the council that the last appendix, we did take a first attempt at at showing a year by year breakdown in terms of timing. And and we note that that is may shift as we have these discussions, but we did do a year by year breakout to give the estimate of timing for all the projects.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that for me, that's helpful, especially when we're talking about prioritization, because we we may think in our brains, we have more time than we really do, just because of the process of kind of moving some of this stuff forward. So the other piece.
No, seriously, can you, do you mind if I just break it? Just because I have a question that is along the same lines, just so that we don't go back and forth. Because I think you you make an excellent point in terms of timeline and also realizing that we already know already that many of the the firms that we may contract with, there are a lot of other people who have similar type projects that, you know, it's also making sure that we get commitments to move forward, you know, in there are labor shortages in, you know, in the region. And so I think that adds to also the urgency of moving forward. And I guess I have I have a question, since the deputy city manager brought up the the timetable and just thinking about the process, because I want to be very mindful of also Councilmember Kovar's comments and feedback on process and thinking about when we move forward with things. But even if we were to move forward and, okay, you know, this plan as like saying, we're going to do this, there are going to be touch points in which, and this is a question that I want to get confirmed, that as we're moving forward with things and needing to appropriate funds, staff would be coming back to council. So even though everything isn't completely flushed out, we would have those opportunities for staff to be coming back to us and, you know, being able to have conversations, maybe shift gears if we think we need to or reprioritize things. Is that a correct assumption?
That is, that is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right. My apologies, Councilmember Cerci. I just wanted to clarify that as as you were going along.
All right. So the next place is just making sure that are there other ways that we can just confirm whether or not the dollar amounts that we are that we're kind of earmarking for certain certain projects is the right amount? There's a couple of places where, like the business grants. And we're talking about, it looks like, it looks like a hundred and I think it's like a hundred and fifty K over the first of maybe this four year period. So if we can, you know, work internally, just to really try to get a better understanding of whether or not these are the right dollar amounts that we're assigning, given the amount of time that this this work is going to have to be executed. I just wonder whether or not some of them are set up perhaps a little too low. So those business grants may be a little low. And also, the multifamily rehab. One question was, you know, what are we considering multifamily? Are we including condo communities? That was one of the gaps that I saw. Is where do condo communities go? And I bring up condo communities because many of them have very aging infrastructure as well. They're one of our only gateways to homeownership that is on the affordable side of things. But if the HOA is over a thousand dollars because the building is falling to pieces, then it is no longer affordable. So it would be helpful to know where, for example, we would put condo communities that would be eligible perhaps for grants or loans. Is it under the multifamily? Or are we talking about other other funding opportunities or separate funding opportunity for for the condo community?
Yeah, so Councilmember Cerci, I think that was just an admission in the final report, condo communities are covered by that by that fund.
Yep.
Okay, great. And so so that kind of goes back to the other point about whether or not that one point five mil is is the right amount. So we know that some of these buildings, I mean, especially now that we've just come off of Hillwood Manor, like, the amount of work that needs to be done in some of these these larger buildings is pretty substantial. So if we could just, you know, work with HCD staff to really just verify whether or not this dollar amount makes sense, that would be really helpful.
Sure. And I'll just note that for a lot of the proposals, the dollar, the original proposal dollar amount was a lot higher. And then we had to kind of negotiate it down as we try to put together a package of of diverse projects. But absolutely.
All right. That's all I got. Thank you all so much.
Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I was just trying to organize my notes because I feel like my colleagues did a much more organized job of presenting your thoughts than I am. I feel like I'm ready to. First of all, thank you very much for the wonderful presentation and all the documents. This, it's an incredible amount of work and super detailed and useful. And as I think Councilmember Kovar said, I I had hoped to get funds out a little earlier, but I do now see extreme value in in being able to look at it with this level of detail, which is wonderful. And I, my kind of top level impressions are that I think this really hits where we should on the prioritization, both of the short term economic recovery and the longer term resiliency. So I really appreciate that. And I think it hits on a lot of the kind of top level need areas that we have identified in that that we see in the community. And and also I appreciate the contingency funds being a part of it as well. Kind of a couple of sort of general concerns or 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 thoughts, I just wanted to kind of present our, I I would love to have some more information and kind of think through long term kind of annual budget versus ARPA budget and sort of thinking through the implications of the two on each other and the way that they interact. I think that will be very important. And then in terms of a lot of these projects and the the funds that we're spending through ARPA, I would like to think about how we're building long term reduction of poverty and long term positive outcomes for our community. So we don't have a situation where we're doing, you know, we're able to spend these funds for two or three years, and then we kind of just pull the rug out and and we haven't sort of built up the structures that are needed for long term success. So I I want to make sure that we think about that. And then at each of the projects that we're doing, there are both the short term, you know, recovery and support, and also the long term infrastructure so that we can keep supporting and we can keep making sure that we are doing the best for our community long term as well as short term. I'm kind of into some of the the nitty gritty of the different proposals. I guess one thing I I had sort of hoped to see a little more on was to utilize some more of the funds towards the reimagining public safety recommendations. I love the mental health crisis counselors aspect. I think that's really important. And I'm not sure if there are restrictions on being able to spend some of the other funds towards towards this, and if it's better to spend funds from a different source. But I I would love to have if there are funds available that we can use towards that, I would, I would like to have a little more of that. Similar to Councilmember Cerci, I had some questions about specific sort of dollar amounts. I I thought maybe the amount the six hundred thousand for the mental health crisis counselors seemed a little low to me. I thought maybe we need to to build that up a little bit, to build out our long term capacity plans on that. And I also wondered about the the dollar amount for the recreation scholarships and whether whether that, how that sort of compared to typical year. To me, that amount seemed actually a little high. And and I would also love to see, I'm not sure if this was built in anywhere in the in that, but would would love to see not just support for children and families through the rect department, but through direct support for childcare providers, because that is a real area that has struggled a lot and continues to struggle, especially now with Omicron, and a lot of, a lot of closures, a lot of a lot of increased need to change schedules, to find new staff, to cover shortages, all of those things. Let me see, I have a number of other comments, and I know we'll have more time in the future to go through things. I guess kind of big bigger picture also, it seemed to me a lot, a lot of the work is or could be very staff intensive. And so I wondered about staff capacity and what level of of thought was given to sort of who would be doing these things and and long term balancing of each of these projects with the current work and other anticipated work. And I I wondered whether perhaps there should be some additional funds built in to do some more of the intensive outreach. I know there is some of that with the navigators and some of the other initiatives, but to make more of the connections from staff to residents and then to be able to have sort of a flexible pot of money that might be available to work on needs that are identified through that process in in sort of a collaborative way. I'm also interested in the the concept of direct cash assistance, which has been mentioned a few times. And then apologies, I know I'm a little all over the place here, but I I would love to hear a little more on library. I I would love to kind of be able to wrap my head around, not tonight, but but in the future, maybe we need to have a work session to sort of talking a little bit about where we are with that project, I guess. And and for me, I'm not fully understanding whether that two million is new two million, or some of that is what we have already planned on spending, but we're spending it from ARPA and and kind of how all of that shakes out. So I I think with regard to the the internal infrastructure work on city facilities, for me, there's there are a lot of questions there that I I'd like to know more about. Kind of bigger picture, infrastructure for the city as a whole. The Tacoma Branch Stream Restoration. That was one that I also had thought we had allocated some funds for. And so I I don't need to get into it too deeply today, but I would love to talk a little more with the Public Works Director and understand where we are with that project. And what that means for some of the residents who I know really have some some drainage issues in that area. So kind of my my top level things, I I also sent around an email to my colleagues proposing that we use funds around two hundred thousand for a citywide traffic safety study and plan. Mayor Stewart and I both talked about this, and I don't want to speak for you, Mayor Stewart, but I, it's my understanding you're supportive of that. And we heard today in the in the council comments, just the the level of of need for traffic calming and traffic concerns that we're seeing in the city all over the um, traffic calming and traffic concerns, um, that we're seeing in the city, um, all over the city. And having some kind of holistic plan that looks at that, um, and provides us with prioritization of what we need to do to be able to address that, um, would really just be hugely valuable to us. Um, so I I want to toss that out as well. Uh, so thank you very much. Looking forward to getting more in depth on this, uh, but those are some of my initial thoughts and questions.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Devalla.
Yes, thank you very much for this. This, wow, this is a lot to absorb and a lot to understand. And I really appreciate the effort, the senior leadership team's effort on this and all the information that's been provided. Um, I did have some questions about, I do have some questions about the intended audiences and how the outcomes would be measured for the different proposals. And it may be that this report you've just sent around addresses a a fair amount of that. So that's great. Thank you. Um, I also had some questions about, uh, how we could ramp up, not necessarily increase the dollar, but how we could ramp, ramp up the community engagement once with the affected audiences, once we get going. Um, I have also questions about timing and staff capacity for some of these for for these projects and how they relate to each other. I, um, did have some questions about revenue replacement and how that was going to work, which I think we're just addressed. Um, so thank you for that. I, um, lo- I love the Data Explorer and I just want to say to all the residents who may still be watching, check it out. Um, that said, I'd like to back up a minute to intended audiences and measuring outcomes and just pull a couple of examples out. So I flipped through very, very quickly a bunch of the, um, rating sheets for the different proposals and many of them answer the question who this change will impact by saying who the stakeholders are, which is not the same thing. So, um, that's something that I'm interested in hearing more about. Uh, for example, on the integration of the housing rehab money and the electrification money, what, who are the targets there? Um, as as Councilmember Cersei said, what about condo associations? Um, is the utility, um, is the electrification money intended to go to the multifamily buildings primarily? So so there's those questions, particularly for the bigger ticket items, more, um, more spec- a little more detail on, um, who will be, who's the intended audience, who will be impacted, not just who are the stakeholders? That would be helpful for me. Um, I, I did just mention the word integration and and I had a question similar to other council members. How do these projects integrate with, um, existing or similar efforts that are already going on? Example being the recreation scholarships, as much as I love them and I wish we could do more of them. What are we, what level of, what level are we doing now? Um, is there a need to give more scholarships or is there a need to expand the program? Is there space to expand the program? Maybe that's a level, that's an example, and maybe that's a level of detail that y'all weren't able to get into in this fairly comprehensive rating of a number, you know, forty something proposals. But those are the kinds of things I'm starting to think about in terms of, if we want to boost the money on one thing, we have to drop it on something else or knock something else out. So those would be helpful for me, um, in assessing, um, two more points, um, three more points. I'm s- I heard that the timing, um, was outlined in the appendix five, which I kind of missed. Um, gross, I was back with appendix four. Uh, so I I'm still thinking I want to hear a little bit more about the timing capacity. I guess I said that. So two more points, um, one about, uh, stormwater, which, um, as Councilmember Kovar said, may not even really be on the list. And there may be a very good reason for that, but I'd like to hear a little more about that. Um, and on the, um, on the library, also echoing the request for a work session or a memo on where we are now. Um, if the last, what does the current, what does the construction manager say about cost, uh, cost estimates now that they're on board and it's no longer August? Um, what about the the places we identified to trim if we needed to? Like to hear a little more about that at some point before decision time. So, um, I like the idea of doing it in two steps, doing the more urgent and or the more, um, of things we agree on. First, get going and then spend the time, um, maybe to flesh out some of the other, the the balance of some of the other projects. But overall, I'm just very, very happy to be at this point. And I appreciate all the effort that went into this. Thanks.
Um, Councilmember Kovar, you wanted to go again?
I neglected to mention one of the things. It's just that I think a simple question. I noticed that in the report, there's a category of, I think, one point two million dollars for social service partnerships. And maybe, I may be getting that name wrong. I just had it on my, yeah, social service partnership, one point two million. So in the time since this report came out, a number of people have asked me on behalf of local community groups, hey, what's the way for us to get funding? And I understand, and you mentioned this, um, Mr. Fox in the opening presentation, that this report doesn't give money directly to any individual group and that totally makes sense. But to the extent that there are individual community groups that, in particular, those that provide services and and programming to at risk or low income people, would you say, I mean, would I be correct in assuming that conceivably through the social services partnership piece would be where they could apply for funds?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Kovar. So the one point two was there, um, at at the discretion of, uh, Mayor and Council for you all to to consider, uh, because there are a lot of NGOs, nonprofits in the or in the community and in the region. And so the one point two is there for RFP process, uh, a new process, or we may be able to use an existing process we have, but, um, that way we can do it equitably and and we're not arbitrarily just selecting nonprofits in a community to get funding to.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Um, actually, I'm gonna, I I'll start there with my comments and start as a follow up there. Um, so it that the one point two million for that category, the, the way it was written in, um, well, first I want to say thank you. Sorry, I just jumped in on that. Um, and I agree with all my colleagues on the excellent work that was done. Um, but jumping in, it it, I took that when I first read the recommendations as a navigator program like the council had talked about, um, when we set priorities last year and talked about the budget. So is it, is that supposed to cover both, uh, a potential navigator pro- project and grant money to community groups? Is that what I'm understanding tonight?
Yeah, yes, Madam Mayor, it could cover, one, it could cover both. It it'd be up to you and and council.
Great. Okay. So I think I'm gonna, um, agree with my, uh, my co- uh, colleagues who said there may be areas to, um, look into. Do we have the right budget amount? Um, because I'm, I'd be concerned that the one point two million, I I would like it to cover both, and I'm not sure it it would cover both, um, there. So that's an area I'd like to just dig in a little bit more, um, on that, um, in that area. Um, just to add, stormwater projects, that was one of the things that had been on my list and would probably, along with my, um, colleagues and, uh, Mr. Reed, who gave testimony tonight, um, would like more information, um, on that and whether or not that should be covered here, um, or not. Um, I had the same question as Councilwoman Cersei on condos. Um, so glad to see that they're, um, covered here. Um, in this section on evictions, um, and preventing evictions, not to get into too too much of the details, but I have talked to, um, Director Cross about this, um, over the last few months and seeing how, um, we can design assistance programs so that, um, we are helping people before they actually fall behind, um, and, um, looking at and working with maybe some of the, um, um, building owners and landlords, um, to provide people with assistance so they're not, you know, cut cutting money other places like for healthcare or other things to pay their rent so they don't fall behind. Um, but tha- that we're providing that assistance if somebody needs it. A number of the eviction programs that have been out there, you have to be behind before you can actually apply for the assistance. And so I just want to have that in mind as we we look at that further, if that makes sense. Um, um, I think, um, Councilwoman Kostic talked about the Vision Zero. I also had questions like Councilwoman Kostic about the childcare, um, and and the scholarships versus are we, um, the capacity we have to provide childcare and under that, i- in that area of needing childcare, is that the best way to do it in offering scholarships or do we actually have to expand our capacity, um, in the city to do more childcare? Um, on, uh, I I don't know if we're calling direct payments or a guaranteed income pilot. That was one of the things that, um, I had, um, asked to be considered, um, moving forward. And, um, I going to what Councilwoman Kostic said before too about thinking about, um, structural changes and long term. The research on guaranteed income does show that that actually does help us, um, build, um, long current, long term capacity for our families. Um, and so I would like us to kind of consider that again. Um, and then I think finally, um, the other thing is, um, there's been a number of conversations, um, regarding, um, per, um, expanding possibly, uh, the OTBA's, um, mission, looking at how we can support. I know Councilmember Smith has been championing this, the businesses on Flower Avenue and other places in the community. And just wondering if i- in addition to or or the, um, we have the small grants to businesses, um, but should we also be exploring whether or not that is, um, support that we want to provide um, for the, uh, the businesses in the community and if that's an appropriate thing for ARPA funds, um, or not? Um, so just kind of wanted to throw that in the mix. Um, but those were, um, and and I agree with Councilwoman, um, Cersei, I do think there are some urgent things here, but I am, I am kind of concerned on some of these longer term projects, the need to get, um, requests for proposals out there and, um, start moving on them. So I don't want us to take too long on the projects. Um, I think that's it for me. And I, um, let's see, Councilmember Cersei. Um, you're on mute. Oh, we can't hear you.
I have like three, sorry. Um, can, can, can y'all just walk me through this one more time? In terms of whether or not the work has to be complete versus the funds being obligated? And and the difference is, for example, with the one point two for the atrium fill in, then our spending budget table in appendix five, we have that for twenty twenty two. That could very well be when those funds are obligated. But are we expecting to have that work done in twenty twenty two? And I'm just trying to make sure that I understand whether or not every aspect of these projects, not only does the money have to be obligated, but the period of performance and what the folks got to do and when they have to be completely done is also reflected somewhere and whether or not that has to happen by twenty twenty six. If that makes sense at all.
I would say that, uh, Councilmember Cersei, that, um, yes, we have it planned for twenty twenty two. Um, and believe that between this year and then going into fiscal year twenty three, that it would be complete. Um, depending on when we start and when you all approve it. But at the end of the day, twenty twenty four, um, is is the is the window when we need to make sure that, hey, it's, we will be doing X amount of projects and it will be done by twenty twenty six. So, um, it needs to be encumbered by then, but yes, we have to have everything done by twenty twenty six, period.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm just, in my brain, wrap, wrap my head around. So table five really talks about when we hope to have those dollars obligated, not necessarily when the work per se will be done.
Correct. And and that's, and that's why we're, we're, we we put this for and trying to get a lot of projects before you so we can get moving.
Yeah. So the obligation is is front loaded in case you run into the, into any hiccups along the way when we're trying to get the project. Perfect. No, that makes sense. Thank you.
Councilwoman Devalla.
Yes, um, and may maybe another just, uh, let's be, help me be crystal clear about this, uh, type of question. So this, this back to the revenue replacement. So, so we put in the list of things we want to be reimbursed for and we get reimbursed and that goes into the general fund, not into the ARPA money? But then.
So, um, we're gonna.
I I'm sorry, I'm still having a little trouble with.
Yeah, no, it is confusing. Um, and we we've been looking at it several times ourselves. So in the budget book, and this actually goes back to Councilwoman Kostic's earlier question about how this will interact, you know, with the general fund. Um, we've set up a separate fund that'll display in the budget book similar to the Stormwater Fund.
Okay, right.
So it'll, you know, it's, the Stormwater Fund has its own positions. You can see the charges that were to the Stormwater Fund as opposed to the general fund. So the ARPA fund will be very similar. Um, and so the revenue loss, you'll you'll be able to see which charges were against the revenue loss portion as opposed to just the direct spending of without, without, that were not earmarked for the revenue loss amount.
But the revenue loss that we've already been reimbursed for, that's separate.
We we will have eight point seven million dollars in the ARPA fund. And you'll be able to see the amount that was submitted for revenue loss and the the projects that were earmarked for that. And then the other amount that was not submitted for revenue loss. So, so all but all the charges will be against the ARPA fund.
Right, and so.
We do, we do not, we do not necessarily have to make transfers to the general fund. We're, we're gonna just charge the ARPA fund directly.
Right. So one like, unlike money, we've been reimbursed already, which was from a different ARPA related source, COVID related source, wasn't ARPA. Um, so this is separate fund and eight point seven million in it right now, and ultimately it will have the full amount. Um, and so if we are reimbursed that go under ARPA, we keep that goes in there. And if we spend more than the eight point seven, because we're doing the atrium, that comes out of there. And forget the capital budget for a minute, um, the atrium. Is that a fair example?
So we, we don't have, the the revenue loss amount is just basically saying that a portion of the ARPA fund has different reporting requirements and and spending eligibility than the other portion of the fund. But it's, it's all in the same ARPA fund. So we do need to earmark for treasury which projects were categorizing under revenue loss and and that distinction will be clear on the ARPA fund page.
Now, I would like, I would like to add that, um, it it's not so much replacing revenue. Um, we are making an estimation of, um, of revenue that did not get generated during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Okay.
So, so when these funds are, so so the final rule allows grant recipients to assess revenue loss in two ways. Either they could take a standard allowance of ten million dollars or they do the calculation as Jessica talked before, which was four point five or eight million dollars. So we don't, we do not have to go back to the Treasury Department to get approval for projects. We have to make sure, based We have to make sure based on the guidelines and the final rule that the projects that we move forward with are eligible. Now, we will have to report to Treasury on an annual basis, project activity. And we will have to provide them with information that says what was funded, under what bucket, for example. So when you use the funds that were targeted or identified as replacement funds, there's a lot more flexibility there in terms of where you can apply those funds. So for example, if we did a $10 million standard allowance, that would leave us with 7.4 million dollars. That has to be very closely aligned with the requirements from the Treasury Department as far as eligible uses are concerned. Under the 10 million bucket, they still have to be eligible and we have to make that justification. But we do not have to get pre-approved to do any of those projects. So lastly, I just want to say that it's not so much reimbursing the the government coffer as it is, we say that, you know, $10 million of revenue we did not capture because of the downturn in the economy during the COVID-19 pandemic. So that $10 million is only ARPA, ARPA funds that can be used for projects that we may have done if revenue had been readily available or growing over time.
Okay.
And I hope that doesn't confuse it any further.
So it's different from last year when we spent money on PPE and we got reimbursed through, again, not ARPA, another COVID account. Okay. And so instead, a way to loosen the rules. So it's still 8.7 million ultimately? Or it's 8.7 million plus whatever we can identify as revenue replacement?
Well, our total allocation is 17.7 million.
Right. I I was dividing by two.
Right. So of that 17.7, 10 million can be identified as revenue replacement funds. And they can be used in somewhat of a different manner than the rest of the funds that are a part of the 17.7 million dollars that we'll be receiving.
Got it. So in other words, it's it loosens the rules. It doesn't increase the amount of money.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Sometimes I gotta hear it a couple of times.
I understand.
Useful. Okay. Thank you for letting me walk through that one more time with feeling. I'm done.
Great. Thank you. I'm thinking that's an old hand, Councilwoman DiBala. So I I think for this evening, the council, I don't see any other hands or comments, and I want to make sure Ms. Clark, Ms. Martin, Mr. Fox, are is there anything? Any clarifying questions you have for council at this point or any information that you need from us in order to prepare for the work session that we will hold on this?
I don't I don't think we have, I I think we have the feedback that we needed. And just appreciate your comments this evening.
Great. Terrific. And just as a reminder, then on the 18th, between six and eight, we'll open it up for the community to come and share more in depth their views, but that's not the only time. We will also have two council work sessions on this and a public hearing as well, as we discussed before. So thank you very much for this. Ms. Martin, it's wonderful to meet you. Look forward to working with you as as we move forward. So thank you so much for joining this evening. All right. We will now move on to our voting item tonight, which is a resolution approving for the FY 2022 Wage Adjustment Memoranda of Agreement and First Reading Ordinance, Amending the Annual Budget in order to provide additional compensation to city employees in recognition of their efforts during the last year. So the first item is a resolution and then the second is the ordinance. And I think I'm turning this over to Ms. Smith and our human res- our Human Resources Director, and we have our city attorney here if we have any questions for him. But just to kind of, if you want to walk us through what we're voting on tonight.
Good evening, everybody. As you probably remember, each year during budget season, we prepare wage adjustments for employees in conjunction with negotiations for the two labor unions. Last July, actually, we met with Local 400 and agreed to their wage increase, which you approved for 1.8% along with a wage increase to non-represented employees. So that has already been put in place effective July 1st. We had not yet finished negotiates negotiations with AFSMI, which we recently finished and the agreement was ratified by their membership for a 3% wage increase. And then a one-time payment for a hazard pay through the pandemic of $3,400. So that is shown, I believe, in the ordinance. Both of those two items are shown in the ordinance. The other thing for you to consider this evening is to increase the Local 400 wage adjustment and wage adjustment for non-represented employees to match that of AFSMI. So non-represented and Local 400 could also get the 1.2% that would bring them up to 3% for the year. So all of, sorry, and and additional $3,400 to other public works employees that may not be included in the AFSMI union as well as essential PD employees. So all of that is wrapped up in the ordinance and then the resolution is for approval of the MOA with the AFSMI Union. That's just a very brief overview. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Councilmember Kovar, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. Just and and perhaps I misunderstood the situation earlier or what you said now, but I was under the impression that for some of the staff, but perhaps not AFSMI, they had already received the 1.8%.
Correct.
But this ordinance says they're getting a 1.8%.
So the so the ordinance, the ordinance speaks to the 1.8% that was already given effective July 1st. Speaks to the dollar amount of that and also the dollar amount, including the 1.2 to bring Local 400 and non-represented up to the 3%.
Just rescating everything that happened, even though some of it happened before. Is that?
Correct. Yes.
That's all. That's all I needed to know. I I just wasn't sure why would we mention the second time, but that's, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. I don't know, did the city attorney want to speak to this? Because I had the same question this afternoon, actually.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. And I, this is a technical issue that probably city attorneys and city managers and people who worry about budgets and appropriations focus on. But one of the concerns about how the resolutions were passed in the summer is that they are resolutions and we're dealing with budget topics. The only way the city can appropriate and expend funds is via an ordinance. Now, there's an argument to be made that it was already done as part of the budget budget process leading up to that year. But it was a different amount than what was allocated. So in order to be technically correct, from the city attorney's perspective, and I believe the city manager concurs, we're doing what is a confirmatory ordinance for what was done this past summer. That way, there can be no doubt that it was done correctly. Now, the other portions of the ordinance address what has happened since this summer. So confirmatory ordinances are done all the time. Confirmatory legislation is done all the time. That way, there can be no debate about whether it was done correctly and consistently with the intent of the council.
Good. Good. Okay. Councilwoman DiBala? You're on mute.
I'm gonna pull sticky on that so I remember where it is. I had some questions yesterday and thank you for answering them in the revised version that we're looking at that tonight. I really appreciate that. My bottom line question is one of budgets. So there was which I think isn't, is not literally identified in here. So we 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 approved a budget that included the 1.8% for everybody hypo- imagining that that's what was going to happen, plus a a small contingency. Now, we are spending more than that. So the 350, 352,000, I gather, is the amount altogether that we're spending for wage incre- wage increases.
Correct.
Okay. So then if I subtract out, I'll get how much we were already spending, whether it was confirmed confirmed officially or not. But we were already, we're already, people, some some staff are already getting 1.8%. So we have pretty, yeah, so it's, so the the what I'm looking for and not necessarily write this in it is the additional money that we are spending. So when we get the next budget amendment, there's going to be a number in it and it's going to say we need X amount more to cover this, these agreements. And so I'm looking for what is that number? So it's a budget question, not a legal question. And maybe it's one of these numbers.
So I believe the the number that we had already spent for the 1.8, I believe, is 103,500.
Okay. So so, right. And so 352 minus 103, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
And am I right that we'll see that City Manager Fox in a budget amendment at some point? Or were you planning to?
That's why we're doing the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. So so beyond the beyond the 100 3,500 that we were already spending. Okay. So so this is a significant. So here's my question. The 1.8 for everybody, including the the AFSMI Union was in budget?
Yes, the the bud- the amount that was that was included in the budget that was passed for FY 22 was 2. was 2%, which was 1.8 based on the ECI and a 0.2 contingency. So 2% was included in the budget amount that you considered April, May, and June of last year for the FY 22.
Right. So so I'm, so how much, for lack of a better way of putting it, new money? It's it's not I don't think it's 352 minus 103.
It's 249,000. I think, right?
Yeah. Well, so if if 1.8 is what was budgeted and and it every and the increase is 1.2 more, then the then the money that was already allocated should be bigger than the number that's new. So that's where I'm
And I don't have it broken out between the 2% and the 2% that was budgeted and the 1% that's new.
Oh, I think certainly, you're you're talking about the whole fiscal year, Cindy. Is that correct?
I am. Thank you. And thank you for, okay, so this is that that explains why I can't get it to.
Right. So you, so the budget we're looking at tonight deals with the having the the retro pay back to July. So that's the change that we need to make. And then what what you're asking for, though, is what? Right? What the
For the whole year. Yeah.
For the whole year.
You're right. You're right. This is for half, for essentially half the year. Okay, I got it, I think.
I think I'm right. I'm looking at Ms. Smith and and our and our city attorney. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I just don't have that number. I don't, I just don't have the additional 1%.
I'd be happy to take that separately.
Okay.
Or sometime later this week. I appreciate that that there are a lot of different ways to present this information. And most important to me is to approve this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Good. So we have a resolution and an ordinance. We'll take the resolution first for for a vote and you can find that in your packet. It's the approval of fiscal year 2022 Wage Adjustive Adjustment, excuse me, Memorandum of Agreement with someone like to move the resolution. Councilwoman Circe moved, Councilwoman, Councilmember Siemens second. Any other conversation or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember DiBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay. And then next we have the ordinance and this is a two reading ordinance that we will start with tonight. Sorry, I'm just trying to get to the top of it of my page. And this is the ordinance, Amending the Annual Budget in Order to Provide Additional Compensation to City Employees in Recognition of Their Efforts During the Last Year. Do I have someone who would like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Circe moved, Councilmember Kovar second. Any comments? Not, Councilmember Siemens and then Circe.
Thank you, Mayor. I listened attentively to the public comments tonight and thought that there were a couple of comments that I think we should consider. Arthur David Olson made the point that the charter does say that we should be allowing public comments at all of our meetings. And although I disagreed with him that we should consider changing the charter, I I do agree with him that people should have the opportunity to speak at each meeting. I don't think it takes us an excessive amount of time. There's occasionally when it does that we have a a major public outcry from some action that the council is considering. But but it's probably a good time to be listening to to the public and at those times and so I I think we should make that change to this resolution. And then
That's our, that's our next item, Councilmember Siemens.
So I'm doing
You're getting ahead of us.
I forgot, I forgot this one had two things on it.
No, 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 it's okay. It it was confusing because it's it's combined on our agenda. You just hold that thought for another two minutes.
But but that was just, I was just rehearsing anyways.
That's perfect. All right. I will move then to Councilwoman Circe.
Woo, I thought I was, I thought I had messed up and I have to talk about the wrong item. Um, so I just want to to just stress how grateful I am for our city staff and all the hard work that they've been doing. You know, through the pandemic, snowstorms, and really working on behalf of all of the the residents in the city of Tacoma Park. And, you know, this is a small token of all of the hard work, but also definitely look forward to continuing to have engagements with our city staff on making sure that work is being done in a way that is Um, engagements with our city staff on, um, making sure that, um, work is being done in a way that is not only safe for them. But also that compensation is happening fair, fairly, and I'm grateful for our, um, city manager and all of the other projects that we have. Planned, um, regarding our compensation studies and, and a lot of our organizational assessments. That are really designed to not only, um, to build on what we're, uh, um, gonna vote on now, so just wanted to say that. Um, just to make sure that, um, staff that may be up late listening, um, know how grateful we are for all of the hard work that they do. That's all I have.
Great, Councilman DiBala. Okay, what she said, I hear you, you're, you're on mute.
Yeah, what she said, I asked questions about the dollars because we wanna know, because our responsibility is the budget, but. Bottom line, I am grateful every day for city staff, um, for doing their jobs during a very. Very challenging period.
Thank you, um, great, and I just, um, I see Mr. Henley is, oh, wait, do we have another? Oh, no, okay.
No, no.
John's still, is still on, and I, and I just wanna, um, thank our, um, the unions in the city, our ASME and our, our local 400. Um, for engaging in the collective bargaining, um, process, um, with us in the city, um. I just wanna say thank you, um, for continuing with that, for raising the concerns and working with us, um, to get to this resolution. So thank you very much, um, for all of that, and with that, I will ask the city clerk to please call the vote.
Right, Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Searcy.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay, um, that is it for our voting items, now we have one item on our work session tonight. And that is the, um. Procedures, the draft council procedures, and I have this in a Word document, and if I haven't. Forgotten over the recess, how to do this, I will, um, share my screen and. We can walk through this document, make sure I pull up the correct one. Folks, I'll make the screen bigger. Everyone see that? You can make it even bigger. Like good? Yep, okay, alright, so I think what I'll do is what we've done in the past, which is, um. Walk us through this, and then if, um, council does have, if you have any, um, places where you wanna make, um. A, a change or, um. Offer something for the, uh, for us to consider, um, please do that, and I will stop, I'm not sure if I can see everyone at one time. So, uh, either raise your hand or holler, um, and in addition, I just wanna thank my colleagues, Councilmember DiBala. And Kovar for working on this, as well as the city attorney, um, and, um, the city manager, deputy city manager, and the, um. City clerk for, um, putting together this document, as it says in the cover sheet, um, the council rules and procedures. Is a document that, um, has been updated over the years, um, this year, there are a number of items. That you'll see in the cover sheet that we dug into a little bit more deeply, uh, one of the things is that now that we are. Uh, meeting virtually and wanna, hopefully, when we can come back in person, um, do more hybrid type of meetings. Um, and have people, um, be able to join us virtually for public comments, we have a section on that. And we also added a section, um, particularly on, um, establishing subcommittees of the council, because. That has seen over the last few years to be a, uh, productive way for, um, us to get our work done, uh, in a timely fashion. Um, so those are, so the big changes, there are a couple of other, um, things and items that we want to check, and I, I do thank. Um, Arthur David Olson and, um, Sue Miller for, um, their comments, um, earlier this evening. And we can address those as we are going through the document. Um, so page one, um, just kind of, uh, sets out the, the preamble, which I think is important to sort of. Just draw everyone's attention to, um, really, we adopt these meeting rules and procedures, and we update them periodically. With the goal of establishing transparent processes for members of the public, council members, and city staff. So that we can, so that everyone can participate in the city government meetings and deliberations. While also ensuring good decision-making processes are in place, so our intent and our goal with this document is to. Um, have set out our procedures and, um, rules, so that everybody knows, um, how we're gonna run our meetings. And how things are gonna go, um, so with that, well, um, I don't think there should be too much on the authority section. Um, the next section that we have, um, talks about our regular council meetings. Um, generally, we hold our meetings, um, uh, when we can in person at the community center on Maple Avenue. We have also, um, hold meetings at the recreation center on New Hampshire Avenue, um, to make sure that we, uh. Are able to go to different parts of the city, um, we begin our meetings at 7:30 unless otherwise advertised. And we adjourn at the conclusion of business, one thing that is new that we added this year, um, was, uh, an idea. Of, um, trying to see if we can keep our council meetings, um, running, uh, smoothly and not having people stay up too late. Um, is to actually have, uh, a goal of ending our council meetings, um. At either, um, 10 or 11 PM, and that's a conversation we wanna have with the rest of the council. Um, and that at a certain, an hour, uh, that we, the mayor would check in with. Um, and obtain a sense of counsel and conferring with the city manager regarding staff availability and deadlines. To, um, continue the meeting past that hour, whether or not we, um, pick 10 or 11 o'clock. Um, and that may mean that we may table some issues, come back to them at another time, and so. One of the things that, um, we'd like to know, um, from all of you is, would you, would you prefer? What, one, do you like this idea of having a check-in, um, and two, uh, would you prefer that the check-in on whether or not to sort of. Continue the meeting, continue it for like another half hour or something like that, happen at 10 o'clock or at 11 o'clock, if that makes. Sense, so for example, tonight, before we began this agenda item, what I might have done, if we had this rule in place, is say. It's 10 o'clock, um, we have one item left, um, is it the sense of council, we wanna continue and move forward with this? Or table it for another evening, um, and then we would have a decision on that, so Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, uh, thank, uh, Mayor and my colleagues for not interrupting me while I was, uh, babbling off on the wrong subject. And when we get to, um. To the, uh, time for public comments and, and the opportunity for public comments. I think you all probably know how I feel about that now, so we won't have to spend a lot of time talking about that. Uh, as far as the item on the table right now, I think, uh, 10 o'clock would be a good time to do that, I think it is appropriate. I've, uh, often felt that, uh, no meeting should last for longer than an hour and a half. Uh, uh, council members, uh, council meetings seem to be special, so they go a little bit longer, but I do think it, uh. It becomes counterproductive, uh, when they get too late in the evening, so I, I think 10 o'clock would be a good time to do a check-in.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Kovar.
Well, I would prefer to let, um, since I was on.
Alright, since you were on the subcommittee, sure, Councilwoman Searcy.
Hi, um, so I actually wanna go where Councilmember Seaman started, this conversation around public comments. Um, I, I like the idea of the check-in, and, um, I am, I could. I'm not willing to fall on my sword between 10 or 11, but one, one thing that did come to mind for me is, um. Where the public comments fall in the agenda, and how that might, uh, you know, how that might actually. Impact whether or not we want to, the time, right, so, you know, if the comments happen earlier in the meeting. Um, we don't have a bunch of special presentations ahead of time, 10 o'clock is appropriate, it would seem kind of rude. To have a check-in of whether or not we wanna continue to convene, if we're still, if, you know, if residents haven't had a chance to, to. Have their general comment period, so, um, I think that it, it makes sense to have the check-ins. Um, I just think that we may want to really consider, um, the format of the meeting to make sure that, you know, at least. Public comments have had an opportunity to occur before the check-in, and so if we're a little nervous about. Or prefer the format that we have right now, then maybe we wanna make that check-in at 11, it seems quite, it does seem late. But that way we can guarantee that we can keep our current format, um, and it will be very likely that the public com-. All of the public comments will be completed by, um, by the time of the check-in.
Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and I appreciate the help of my colleagues weighing in, um, I'm in the camp that, uh. Councilmember Searcy's in, and I really think 10 o'clock is too early, because what that means is that. You know, perhaps as early as 9:30, we're thinking about it. And. Honestly, it feels like we'll do one or two things a night now, yet, and I guess it's tempting to say, maybe we shouldn't do any more than that, but. That's not what people in the city are expecting of us, that's not what I ran for the city council to do, and I think. 11 o'clock is an excellent time beyond which we should try to avoid going unless there's something major going on. And then we have a lot of time in between 10 and 11 to assess how things are going and figure it out, uh, 10 o'clock, I mean, I'll definitely vote against 10 o'clock. If that's, if that's the proposal, uh, I just think we're shortchanging ourselves and our, our capabilities if we do that, and, and I agree with. Councilmember Searcy that, depending on how things flow in terms of the, um, of a comment, that could be an issue as well.
Yeah, and just say, it says no later than, so if we did no later than 11, we could check in at 10:30, depending on what was. You know, if we thought there was a big item coming up on the council agenda, so it doesn't preclude us from checking in earlier.
And, and maybe we decide on a thing like Tacoma Junction where there are a lot of people, we're just gonna, you know, suck it up that day and, and, and go late. But we would do it knowingly and maybe agreeing, on the other hand, that we would put off everything else we have, and just stick with that one thing. If we had a, uh, a bigger number of public commenters than we had expected.
Councilman Kostic.
Yeah, when I first saw this, I was like, oh, 10 o'clock is way too early, um, but I, I was sort of thinking it is, of it as being 10 o'clock would be the goal. When we would end the meeting, which I think was realistic, I do think 10 o'clock probably is a fine time for us to start thinking about. When we are going to end the meeting, so, you know, I, having to check in at 10 or 10:30, it to me seems reasonable. I think it's a little late at 11 to start thinking about, kind of, I, I guess it depends on, on whether that, that sense of the council is more of. More common to be, hey, do you all wanna end the meeting in the next five minutes, or, hey, do you wanna go another half an hour? Um, so I, I think probably a 10 or 10:30 would be useful, because it could give us a little preview of, oh, we're gonna plan on going one more hour. And then finishing, or we're gonna go a half an hour, um, to me, that seems like it would help preview it a little bit, but I don't have super strong feelings on, on which it is.
Councilman DiBala.
Yeah, so, um, in the, in the number, little number I below, regardless of the hour, the mayor shall not interrupt. An ongoing agenda item. Our public comment for the purpose of complying with it, and maybe that fixes the concern, which I agree with. That in those evenings where public comment is extensive, we don't wanna shortchange that in order to be rushing to. End the meeting, and so that's my suggestion for having.
Public comment is an agenda item, so it doesn't.
Well, then, then, there you go, okay.
I don't think we, I think it's, I think it's fine. Okay, are you, are you okay 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock, I'm hearing a split on council, so I may need.
I, I, I. If, if, if the me- as to whether to continue the meeting beyond the 10 PM hour, if that stays 10.
No, it's, it's, uh, uh, let me, let's clarify, unless exceptional warrant, no later than 10 PM, the mayor shall obtain a sense of counsel. And confer with city manager statement as to whether to continue the meeting beyond, yeah, beyond the 10 PM hour. Or table some items, right, so this is the idea that, yeah, we would check in at 10 PM, no later than 10 PM, to end the meeting at 10 PM.
I agree with Councilmember Kostic, check in at 10 PM to end the meeting, no later than 11. Or earlier. But it don't feel strongly.
Councilmember Kovar doesn't like that.
Well, that's not what it says.
Right, but they're, I think they're saying to change it.
Yeah.
I think that was, that'll be hard, I'm just gonna say, I think it's might, that might be hard if you, if at 10 o'clock, because then. With that, I, I, logistically, I'm just gonna put it out there as the person who runs, like, I, I feel like that may not actually work. Because once you're in the middle of something, it's very hard to know sometimes, um, and then, then we may end up actually. Running afoul of interrupting, I, I, I'm not sure we would actually.
Just to reiterate, no later than 10 means we might start considering whether to stop at 9:30. So, after, after the initial explanation of what we're doing that night, it might be, I mean, maybe, maybe Councilmember Seaman's right, maybe we should only need for 90 minutes. I, I just think that's a mistake.
Well, and I think the other thing is too, and, and I've, I'm backing down from the 10, uh, affirm 10 that we have to end the meeting. But, um, there also, it had the, this has to be written flexible enough that, uh, you know. There are some things that we have to consider and, and have to continue until we get it done, uh, so there can't be a lights out at a certain time.
Right, this is written as, like, we're checking in.
Right.
Yeah, so. Yeah. To other people, I, I actually think, I agree with Councilmember Kovar that 10 does honestly with, I mean, even tonight where we did not have. Very extensive, but we had a, a, probably an average number of public comments, we had, you know. Only one voting item and a, a good discussion of the ARPA funds, we were at 10 o'clock. And so, um, I think in general, to get the work done that we usually need to get done. To move things along, it's more likely that, I think, shooting for an 11 PM, check in 11 PM, finishing up our meetings. And if we do it earlier, that's great, but I think that's probably more realistic, and if we do a good job. Of that and get ourselves, um, moving along in our meetings, we may end up, um, ending earlier, but I, I think. More often than not, we're closer to the 11 PM. So I'm seeing heads nod, would anybody object if I put 11 PM?
No, I think either one of those is better than what we have.
Okay, so we'll, we will try, Councilwoman Searcy, yeah, you have a hand up?
Alright, um, is there, um, is there a particular reason why we're giving a meeting end time? Like, do we, do we, we need to do that, or could we just have the check-in? Because, because the way I read it, the, the first go around, is that we would have the check-in, but the goal would be to. Basically, say our meetings go from 7:30 to 10, or now 7:30 to 11, is, is that one of. The goals of this language, or is the goal to just make sure that we have that opportunity to check in, to see where we are? Should we keep going, and if the answer is, yeah, we keep going, then we go until we're done, or is it? You know, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, because I, I, in reading this section, it felt like it was trying to do both. Give that check-in time and establish a meeting end time, and that's when my brain started going towards, okay, so we need to reconfigure the agenda. Because if we have 100 people that want to come and speak, and that's after we vote on, like, there's no way. So I, so it, I, I just wonder if we even need to establish an end time, we just established a check-in time.
So maybe if we just take out the part that I just highlighted? And I don't know, I, I think the city attorney is still with us, sorry, I can't see everybody.
I am, Mayor, I, I think that you would need to say something like, to continue the meeting beyond. I am, Mayor. I, I think that you would need to say something like to continue the meeting beyond a, or continue the meeting past a set time or something like that, but I, I can play around with the language. I think I understand the intent.
Okay. I'm just gonna highlight this so that we can come back to it. Okay, cool. All right. I think that then we have a good, councilwoman Kovar, did you wanna speak to this or we're good? Okay. So then the next item is special meetings. Those may be held on necessary on days other than Wednesdays. When we can get to notice them, when we're adjourning meetings. Open sessions, quorum minutes. Stop me, and I know councilwoman Kostic, you had a couple of things, just stop me when I get to, um, minute, presiding officer. This about the mayor and the mayor pro tem. Then we get into section two point eight and meeting notices. And it, and this is where we want to talk about in a minute, the agenda, where things will be noticed. The section on closed meetings. And now we want to talk, now I'm gonna go to two point one zero, which is the order of business at regular meetings. And one of the things we wanted to talk about was when we have, um, public comments. We had tried like, I think, a year and a half ago, um, when we were, I think it was first under COVID to see like, oh, should we do of public comments and voting items in voting session because we had gotten feedback from some people that they came to council meetings or, um, to comment on a voting item. And then if there were a lot of general comments, by the time they, we actually got to a voting item, it was really late. So we tried this, but what then happened is what Ms. Miller talked about, which is sometimes then public comments on general things got really late. Um, and that did, um, and when they showed up and it was much harder to predict what time general comments would be, um, if we had them after voting items. So I would move that we do things like we did tonight, which we have both comments on, public comments on voting item and then on general comments. Um, I don't think we, I think it's rare, it does happen sometimes that there are issues that come up, that there are a lot of just general public comments. So somebody who's there for a voting item may have to wait through that. But I think that, that happens less often than the inconvenience and the frustration, as Ms. Miller pointed out, to people, um, wanting to give general public comments and then having to wait through voting items. So I would suggest that we do it like we did tonight. Councilmember Kovar?
I agree, and I would just point one thing out at the beginning. It says, um, the normal order is this, subject to change by the presiding officer. If, for example, you had a special guest who was making a presentation, who maybe for health reasons or something like that, might find it hard to stay really late. And on that particular day, an unusually large number of people had signed up for public comment. As I read this, you in your discretion could say, you know what, this time we're just gonna let, you know, whoever the person is, do that little presentation first and then we'll go to the, to the comments. So that in that rare occurrence when there might be some valid reason for it, but otherwise, I definitely like the idea of having the, all the public comments first.
Yes, and we, and we have done that. And the other reason we do it is honestly a financial one, because if we're paying consultants, there's no point in paying consultants for hours to, um, be on Zoom or sit in the auditorium. Um, and sometimes we will have them come present, um, and that's why sometimes we also start council meetings, um, and have done this in the past, mostly pre-COVID, um, where we may start at like six o'clock or six thirty and have presentations then, um, by folks outside. All right, so we'll make that change. I'm not seeing any objections to that. Then we just, um, talk about how we recognize council members during meetings. Identify what a consent agenda is. And then we move down to section two point one three, which is council discussions and decision makings. Um, and we had highlighted, um, one section here, um, because this was something the subcommittee, our group went back and forth on, um, this item during, um, decision making, there should be full discussion of opinions and differences. Council members who disagree with a decision should not criticize their fellow council members or staff or acting on the council decision. Um, that was a recommended, uh, addition. Um, but I think some of us, we went back and forth on some language and other things, um, and it wasn't quite right. Um, so we wanted to, that's why we highlighted it for, um, discussion today. And I think I see, um, first councilwoman CRC and then, uh, Kostic on this one.
Um, so I was confused by this statement. Um, I didn't know if we were talking about, um, criticism during, um, a meeting or criticism outside of the council meeting. And, and I, I wasn't sure if I understood the intent behind the acting on the council decision. So I don't know if we're talking about criticism based on a vote, criticism based on comments. It, it just, it seemed very, I, I just wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't sure. Um, it would be helpful. I don't, I don't know if we could kind of talk a little bit more about what the intent of this language is so that it would be, it would be a little easier to kind of help come up with some wording? Because I was, I was just confused, I'm sorry. And I don't even know if I should have raised my hand to say it.
No, no, I, it's fine. Um, I don't know, um, I don't know, the, the city manager, if you wanted to speak to this or councilman, uh, DiBala or Kovar?
I would say, um, Madam Mayor and Council, for this section here, um, it was the intent, um, was, um, thinking about future councils, making sure that, uh, you and your future peers uh, continue to, um, stay professional, um, on the dais. And so, um, if you guys agree, wasn't, as far as criticizing through comments or, um, staff coming to present or action that staff took on behalf of council that staff is criticized. And so that was the intent, is just, um, talking about the, the action on the behavior, um, council towards staff or towards each other in a public setting. And that's, that's consistent and best practice language that you'll find in, uh, most rules and procedures across the nation, that they have something alluding towards that.
Does that help, councilwoman CRC?
I triple muted myself again. Um, I guess what I was still unclear about is what we mean by criticizing, criticism. Like, is it personal attacks? Is it, are you able to say, I disagree with this position, like, and why? Um, I think that was the piece that still was a little unclear for me, but I'll, I'll, I'll stand down and see what others think. Because I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, like, what's, I, I, I totally agree. Professional courtesy and professionalism is something that definitely needs to be stated, but I'm, I'm not quite sure of what the right to be.
And, and council member, it, it's, um, you, you can, it, it's basically, yes. You know, you can take, talk about differences and, and you're, you're not attacking your, your colleague or your future colleague um, from the dais. Um, and so it's just that, that courtesy and similar to, you know, attacking staff on the dais. So yes, it, it would, it would be towards that. But you can, you could take the word criticism out and, and, and you can play with that and put something else in, but it's, that was the, the main intent.
Um, councilman Kostic?
Yeah, I, I had a very similar thought to, uh, councilmember seriously's confusion about sort of what the, the overall intent was. So this is really helpful. I, I am very uncomfortable with the concept of, of, um, council members not criticizing uh, decisions because obviously we, we don't always agree. Um, and I think we need to be able to say that, but I strongly believe that we need to be respectful and, um, uh, and be professional as, as was said. Um, so for me, something more along the lines of avoiding personal attacks and focusing on the issues to me would be more appropriate, um, as language here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, I agree with what my colleagues have said. None, it should be very clear that no personal attacks of any kind should be allowed. But council members have to have the ability to express and courteously and professionally disagreements with, um, decisions that are made, number one, you said I disagreed with that, I voted against it, here's why I didn't like it. But also, um, there might be something you voted for, but the way it's been implemented, you, you, um, think is, uh, not in line with what was intended. And again, that should not be, those kinds of concerns should not be expressed in, uh, in a way that's a personal attack anyway, but an elected official. It's, it's fundamental to the position of an elected official that we have to be able to say if something has happened in terms of implementation that, that they differ with, they have to have the right and the ability to express that. So to me, it's drawing a distinction between personal attacks and courteous, professional disagreements on policies and issues. That's, that's the, that's the point here that we need to, in my view, uh, the distinction that we need to draw.
Um, councilmember Smith?
Uh, I, I appreciate Mr. Fox's, um, proposal here. My question is, uh, what are the consequences if a member of the council criticizes or is not, is unprofessional towards their colleagues or, or staff? Will they be publicly repamanded, sanctioned? Uh, what, what are the consequences? Or are there any consequences?
That's it.
Is, is that, councilmember Smith, is, is that a question you're directing to me or?
Yeah, yeah, to, to, to you or the city attorney. It doesn't, it doesn't matter whomever drafted this language. I, I'd give it a shot, but I mean, anytime, um, someone would not comply with council rules and procedures, the presiding officer would have the authority, at least at a minimum and in the near term, to declare them out of war. Okay, thank you.
Um, councilmember Siemens?
Yeah, I just think that, uh, as we're thinking about, uh, wordsmithing that paragraph, that we need to include those words that everybody mentioned, you know, courtesy, professionalism, uh, and, uh, personal attacks ought to be in there.
So how about this? Um, council members who disagree with the decision should avoid personal attacks and express disagreements with fellow council members or staff for acting on a decision in a respect, in a, in a respectful manner or something along those.
I'd say respectful and professional manner because it, that's central to it.
Did that get us close enough for tonight and then people can review it? Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much for helping with that. Um, moving along, then, um, we can cancel a crink cruiser, is that, um, then we have voting items, voting sessions. And then I think the next item, I'm seeing a couple of hands, but I'm assuming they're old hands unless somebody tells me they're not.
I have.
Yeah, yeah.
Mine's a new one. Oh, go ahead, councilmember Siemens, if you know. Okay, um, yeah, so I just, on, um, on the voting, I, section, I did just want to ask about, um, the roll call vote. I know we went back and forth early in the pandemic about whether we had to do kind of the, you know, every single call, each person, each time we vote on everything when we're doing this virtually, which is a little different than how we do it in person. If I remember how we do it in person anymore. Is there any capacity to change that to make it more akin to what we did before? Or do we, do we kind of keep on with what we, we have been doing?
I think that's a question for the city attorney. When we first started in the, in COVID, that was a conversation we had and we made the decision that we would have a verbal vote on each item. But I think if we want to go back on that, that's, that's a question for the city attorney.
I, I, I mean, it's, it, it's, it's really up to you. I want to double check the charter to see if it requires something different. But, um, it, it generally, the requirement is that there is an affirmative effort to make your vote known, um, and, and that you do it consistently the same way. So, um, right here, right now, I don't know what the charter says on that specific, uh, issue. But, um, you can change, that being said, if you want to do something differently. And since I wasn't the city attorney prior to COVID, I don't know that I remember how, how you did it. So how did you do it previously?
We just did all, all those in favor, say aye. No.
Yeah, you can certainly do it that way, right?
Okay.
And, and the theory with the roll call vote was that way we know what everybody's saying when we transition to remote, I guess. So, okay, yeah, you can certainly do that.
Okay, we can do that. It just means everybody has to take themselves off mute. So we know that you're saying, right? And I'm wondering if the, the, I see the city clerk has her hand up, if you have a, a thought on this.
Yeah, um, I, I just wanted, I, I was just gonna remind you what, what we used to do, what, what the council used to do. And that is that on resolutions, there was generally, it's a voice vote, you know, every, say aye. The, the mayor would ask the council to say that the yays and nays as opposed to a roll call. And then always on ordinances, we've done a roll call vote, even so if a consent agenda had an ordinance in it, we would, uh, conduct a roll call vote for that purpose. So just to remind you of what we've done in the past.
Right, so for example, tonight, we could have done yay or nay on the resolution, but we still would have called the roll call vote on the, um, ordinance regardless of that, so.
Yeah, I guess my, my question, and I don't, I, I know early on it was kind of cumbersome to do the, the roll call. I don't know if it still is. I've got kind of used to it. I, I don't know if, um, for Ms. Carpenter, is it hard for you to record who's voting how? If we do just do a yay or nay, or it, do you prefer the, the, um, roll call? I'm just curious about that from a just call standpoint.
It's, it's more, um, online when, when we're, um, but virtual, the roll call vote is really helpful, uh, because I, I can't necessarily see everybody. It, it's different when I'm, when we're sitting at the dais and I'm looking at everyone. And even then, if you'll recall, sometimes I would have to say it wasn't clear who the no vote was or, or if everybody voted. So, but it's definitely harder on Zoom to know who's voting if we don't do a roll call.
Then, then I'm good with, with kind of keeping it how we are, um, if it, if others don't have concerns about it.
One other advantage of the roll call vote, in addition to helping the city clerk, also allows the public to know how the individual elected officials are voting on each particular item.
Okay, um, moving along then, so we'll keep the, the sections on voting. Public comments, okay, there's a couple of things I know here, um, as we've already talked about. Um, let me just find it. All right, the public is invited to comment at each regular meeting. Advanced signup is not required unless otherwise noted. Um. Trying to find the. All right. So I think the councilmember Siemens, if um the point you were making before and uh Arthur David Olson was making is that you would like to change it so that at every meeting um that council has that there is a time for public comment.
Correct. And I think it's especially important, given the current political environment across the nation, that people have the opportunity to be heard and and uh not be limited on their speech, overly limited on their speech. Uh, when I first joined the council, there was no time limit on public comments. And um I think uh some people abuse that. I think we're now uh with the three minute limit. Um, and even providing some exceptions to that. I think we're uh doing well there, but I think people should be allowed to talk at each of the meetings.
Anyone have a different point of view or people want to change that? Councilman Dibala.
So clarification. So now when we have a budget session or or a separate meeting on a particular topic and we're just focusing on that topic, then there would still be a public comment session at that meeting. Would it be? And if that is the case, would it then be restricted to the topic of that meeting? So if 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 the if we're meeting on a Monday night to talk about the capital budget. Boom.
Should be limited. I think it should be, you know, it's an open opportunity for the for the public to talk to the council and um express their feelings on any subject. Um, again, I don't see that that's been abused in the past. And I think it does. It's important for the public to feel that they do have our ear.
All right. Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, I'm not sure I go along with this one. You know, one of the concerns I have is that there are some people who, members of the community, who are really very familiar with our processes and our procedures and monitor the work that we do very closely. And I suppose we could say everybody should do that. And we try to encourage people to be involved in various ways through our public engagement work and so on. But I think in general, people are pretty aware of the opportunity to speak at regular many meetings. But in terms of the turnout that we get at the other meetings, whether budget or maybe council priorities or some of the other kinds of meetings we have, the public turnout is quite small. And um I I worry that it would really be giving an advantage to those who kind of know the process. And to the detriment of the more general public. So I I have I have some misgivings about about this one.
Councilman Kostic.
Definitely understand the the two perspectives. I think I'm generally inclined to support having public comments at all of our meetings. But perhaps allowing for an exception to that or or specific exceptions where needed, uh, because we do also need to make sure we can get our work done. Um, and so I also would probably limit the comment to the topic at hand, um, if we're having a budget work session, for example. Um, and and those are typically things where we have um two meetings a week. So there should be a general public comment uh later in that week. Um, but I do like the idea of allowing for some comment. And I know I actually think during the the budget sessions, it would actually be useful to us sometimes to hear some public comments. Um, but there may be situations where we just really, we've had a lot of meetings and we need to dig deeply into something and and we um need to kind of consolidate public comment into one particular time as well.
Councilwoman Circe.
Oh, this is a tricky one. Um, I I agree with Councilwoman Kostic. I think that um uh we have a set amount of time that we need to kind of make decisions and do work. Um, and I am concerned kind of going to the prior conversation around how long our meetings are. Um, and I also heard in public comments multiple times, including tonight, that there is a desire for there to be more of a bidirectional exchange with residents regarding their comments. Um, so so I would be open to allowing public comment periods related to topics. So for example, with the budget discussions or other meetings that we may have that is relevant to the topic, I I think we should keep it to the three minutes. Um, but I do think that, you know, off top, like in another way, we may want to start talking about um how the council could have for some of these bigger issues, like some of those council wide public meeting where there is more of just a bidirectional exchange with residents on the topic. So it doesn't necessarily have to happen when we're actually discussing make having to vote and make decisions and we have staff there and we're paying people to to kind of do the back and forth. Um, it could be that we we treat some of these big ticket items as like scheduling a separate meeting with council where there's an opportunity for us to do that bidirectional.
Well, and I would say I think we've done that in the past. You know, for example, when when we had the we we were preparing for the city manager search, we had a community conversation on that. We've had, you know, we we do do that um in so that we can have more of a conversation and dedicate the time to really hear the public and have an exchange on on an issue. Um, so and and we could do more of those. Um, you know, we're gonna have more conversation on the ARPA funds on the eighteenth um and other things. So I I think we could, I'm just agreeing, like, I think we we have a good model that we've done in the past. Um, and we could have more of that.
Yeah, no, totally, totally agree. So I I and again, I mean, I'm I'm open to it, but I I I would be remiss if I didn't say that that honestly, when we're in those really crunch work sessions where it really is an opportunity for us to engage with staff or really dive deep, I am concerned about time. If if we allow for comments periods during every single one of those meetings, especially if we allow it to be open and not focused on the topic at hand.
And and yeah, I I I agree. I agree with Councilwoman Circe. I I like the idea of of being more intentional of having those other meetings where we can have more back and forth and it's dedicated to one thing. And I and I also think usually almost always when we have a special meeting, if it's a budget meeting on a Monday night, um, you know, one of the reasons we we've started doing that was because we have so much to cover. And um, again, being conscious of of the staff's time that they've worked a full day and then they're coming to the the meeting at night. Um, and if if that's a Monday night and we have a a council meeting on Wednesday night where we have public comments, it's, you know, we're not, it's it's not like we're we're going like weeks without or even in a whole week without an opportunity for people to come and have public comments. And I don't think there's ever a time, and I'm not sure, I asked the city attorney, where we would vote on something that we would not have public comments before a voting item. Um, so anyway, that's just, I I lean towards, again, I think, struggling with this, where Councilwoman Circe is, is that particularly thinking of of staff time. Um, and all right, I don't know if these are hands that are old or new. Sorry.
No, but I um, and I just say my last my last word on, and that is that I I think that yes, there are times when public comments take an exceptional amount of time. I think normally, you know, you're talking, you know, fifteen minutes, a half hour is a lot. Uh, and we're happy when people show up at the council meetings and state their opinions. So uh, I I don't see it as being burdensome uh ninety percent of the time.
And councilmember Siemens, would you be okay if it was limited to the top for the special meetings? And I don't know if we can do this based on the charter, but the topic at hand or?
No, I'll I'll become very discourteous and uh and uh unprofessional if if I don't get my way.
Okay. Um, councilmember Kovar and Dibala.
Just two thoughts that could maybe help around the edges. One is um maybe in in the same section or a section right after that, we could just mention more explicitly that periodically the council hosts uh meetings on broader topics where there's a greater give and take specifically designed to do that. And then the second thing I would say is while I agree, Mayor, with what you what you said about these work sessions, um there are occasionally instances in the budget, maybe when we do some reconciliation, where we actually do take votes on um.
I guess we do hand vote.
Right.
Right, you're right, you're right.
And and maybe, I mean, I don't really, I don't agree with the idea of uh, I I think significantly in a major way, expanding all the all the public conference for all these special meetings, but maybe in an event like that, in a meeting like that, maybe we could consider it. I don't know. But those are my two thoughts.
Um, councilman Dibala, is that an old hand, a new hand?
I was just gonna say that I um I support either either having only targeted comments at a special meeting or no comments. For all the reasons we've just heard.
And I'm going to ask the city attorney, and I don't know if this is something that you know off the top of your head, but given that what the charter says, can can we specify for special meetings that the comments need to be germane to the the to the topic of the special meeting?
I would like to review the charter and the code and provide you, the council, with a written opinion regarding that.
Okay. I will make a note of that. I think I can't, for some reason, it's not letting me add a new comment. All right, all right. Um, I will try and all of a sudden, it's not letting me do that. Um, all right, so we will come back to that then. Um, and get the opinion of the uh city attorney and discuss that further. Um, I think the other item in, there were two other items in this section, and one was, um, I think Councilman Kostic, did you want to raise the issue in about um timing?
Yes. Um, yeah, so um section three or III, I don't know how you read it, um, is about allowing um three minutes um in general for for public comments, but allowing the exceptions for five minutes. And I although I love the opportunity to be able to provide people with that sometimes and to hear a little more from people, I really think we should keep it limited to three minutes total and not have the exception. I do think that that um creates confusion for people, frustration when people don't understand that they need to request it ahead of time. Um, and it in terms of an equity issue, I do think it allows access for people who um you know, know that they need to do that, have gone on the website, have the familiarity, um, but know the mayor's email address or the city clerk's email address to make that request. Um, and so I think it would be better to just have kind of a blanket rule that applies to everyone, which is just the three minutes and and no additional exceptions.
Okay, um, councilmember Siemens, did you?
Old hand.
Okay, councilman Dibala.
Yes, I agree with councilmember Kostic. Um, for the most part, the one exception I might make and and not to have it be that on the mayor to have to decide, but if somebody is representing a community group or a list of petitioners or some recognized group of 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 residents, like a neighborhood association, then maybe they could have the extra time. Um, but I've been kind of uncomfortable with the three minutes, five minutes, and people get it, some people don't, some people know about it, some people don't. Also into to the overall point of, yeah, people want to come and talk to us in at the meeting and and that's great. And I really like to hear from people at the meetings. Um, but there are also plenty of other ways to let us know what folks are thinking. Uh, so that's my view on that.
I would just say personally, I the it's very hard to know who who's representing what and what we would consider a recognizable group, neighborhood group. So I would just say if we, I would from personally, if it stays with having to, this is predates me, I think, um, having um it come to the mayor and the mayor having to approve it. Um, this is not something I like doing. Um, it is also you know, it it requires, you know, sometimes I miss emails or things. Um, but it does make it harder to, if if we were to change this, um, to say that, you know, somebody representing a group, because then who determines, like, what is, what are, how are we defining a group? Um, and I don't, you know, in the future, if it sticks with the mayor or if we move this to the staff or whomever, that person is going to be put in an awkward position, I think, in having to determine what consists of a recognizable group in our commi- community. So I I I would request that we either keep it or get rid of it.
Um, councilmember Smith.
I would say that uh I would keep the three minute uh time limit, but I uh would also should suggest that uh council members should be required to only be able to speak for three minutes and do it uh for a couple rounds. Um, if citizens can only speak for three minutes, I don't see why we should have anything uh beyond that time time amount.
Councilwoman Circe.
Right, um, so in terms of the five minutes, um one of the things that I've noticed is that sometimes we use that five minutes as a way to kind of give uh some groups or organizations an opportunity to kind of provide a a little bit more information. It's kind of like a way to get on the agenda without getting on the agenda.
Mm hmm.
And so one of the things that I wonder is that is then, you know, how do we need to make sure we're working with with staff? That if it is the case that, you know, I'm just saying, like, the CDA or OTBA, like, sometimes we throw them in and say, hey, you can have five minutes. And that's the way you kind of give us a quick little summary. You know, will there be mechanisms for those kinds of little mini presentations that sometimes happens during those five minutes to get incorporated into our main agenda?
Yeah, absolutely. We've done that before. We did that when we did the LED lights. Um, I mean, normally CDA and OTBA, we, they're on the agenda. I I don't recall in the past just having them, unless they're speaking to an issue.
Yep.
Um, and if that's the case, then we could, if they wanted to actually get on the agenda, we could look at that. But when yeah, when they're giving their reports or something. Um, but yeah, I mean, we did that, like, when when there were a group of residents who had brought in an expert on the LED lights, we actually put it on the agenda versus saying, like, okay, you had just five minutes for, um, so I think there's 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 been examples of that in the past where um, and there are ways in our charter too where people can petition to get on the the council agenda.
Yeah, and that and so I think if if that's the approach we take in those special cases where it's warranted, where there's like an actual mini presentation, and that's why they want to go a little long, then we figure out a way to get them incorporated into the agenda, get rid of the five minutes, and just keep everyone to the three.
Councilmember Kovar.
Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, I I guess I'm wondering how often someone asks for the five because it seems to me it's. Not even as often as every other councilman is pretty rare and and I suppose from what you're saying, there's a little bit of awkwardness around. The switch situation for you, so I don't want to minimize that, but it it seems like it's not used very often.
It's actually requested more frequently, but usually people don't know about the twenty four hours and we try to. And that's also a place that's awkward because we. Again, to be fair to everybody, like, you know, we have this rule, so there there are some people that. We say no to because of. And that you have three minutes because we want to make sure that it's available to everybody.
Well, so I guess the other question I would have, and maybe this would be a bad idea, I don't know, but in COVID, in the COVID era. Anybody who speaks has to sign up. Online, right? So.
Yes.
If it was explained there. Maybe that would just invite too many more of those awkward requests for you, but. Then it wouldn't be something only some people knew about, it could set it there. It's an option.
I think it does. I think when you leave, I don't, I can't remember, I had to go back and look.
Well, if it says it in the.
Councilmember Kovar, you want to keep the five minutes.
Yeah, I do, but particularly if it says it in the signup. Then I don't think we can argue that it's unknown to other people because everybody has to sign up now, maybe in in the future.
No, I'm just saying it's awkward again on the day of the meeting.
Yeah.
To be answering my emails when I do have another job. That's why we put in the twenty four hour rule and now we want to make this not the the role of the mayor. That would be fine with me too, right? Right now, what it is is that the mayor approves prior to the meeting. And so I do think as Councilman Kostick said before, there there is an advantage to for some people in our community who. Know the process and everything else that. To do this. So just putting that out there.
Or should it be someone other than you?
I just again, a historical perspective, in the past, it was in the hands of each individual. Council member for their constituents. With the encouragement to limit it. To very infrequent that it was used.
So each council member could give like extend the public comment time?
Right. But it could request the mayor to extend the courtesy to a particular constituent for that evening.
And you would just do, I see, I I my concern is it goes to. Well, if we want to go in this direction, that's fine. I just that it it does go to the length of our meetings and.
I'm not advocating that. I was just telling you.
Yeah.
Another approach.
I think we may have lost Councilman Kostick, just I don't know if you got, was you're back on?
I'm back, but I'm only on my phone. I'm still trying to get in on my computer.
So I guess I, sorry, but we could just go around, because I can't see everyone. For purposes of wrapping this up. Just let me know if you favor getting rid of the five minute extension. Okay, Councilmember Kovar, you want to keep it, right? Councilman Divala?
I I think it's unfair. To, yeah.
Get rid of it, okay. Councilman Kostick?
Yeah, I would like to get rid of the five minutes.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens?
I'm being contrary to night.
Okay, so you're gonna keep it. Is that with the contrary view? Okay, well, you're not being contrary. It's it's split right now. You're with Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Smith.
But he's often contrary.
Uh, and and I think that's fine. I I would. Get rid of the five minutes and also. Require counsel to have a five minute or a three minute limit.
Okay, come back to that. I wrote that note. Okay, um. Councilwoman Cersei, sorry, I was losing track.
I would get rid of the five, so long as we have a way to direct people to the agenda.
And yeah, okay, so that, so we are getting rid of the five minute then. And then let's. Speak to the proposal. Councilmember Smith, your proposal to limit. Counsel comments to three minutes. Is that just at the beginning of the meeting or when people are?
It's at the beginning and during the court, the meeting itself.
Okay, does anyone have any use on that? And so let me just ask this other question, Councilmember Smith, that so if we were talking about an item. Each, you would have a total of three minutes, so it wouldn't be like each time, like you couldn't talk for three minutes and then come back again. Because sometimes council members come back again after other people spoke.
Council members would would have. Two rounds to speak on a an agenda item and each round that we get three minutes.
The particular agenda item we're on right now would be. Difficult to monitor. I mean, I would think that we wouldn't just pick two items off of this. This topic we're talking about right now, and those are the only two we could talk about. We would limit it to three minutes on each of those two. Items out of this, so I'm just saying that sometimes that would not be workable, I don't think, but overall, I think that. I don't know how it would work, but. It would be nice if people weren't so verbose sometimes.
I wonder if we could do it for voting. I, oh, sorry, sorry, Councilmember Smith, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, I I would. By addressing Councilmember Siemens' question, I would say that, you know, it would. Mean that council members would have to review the agenda and. And review the agenda items and and write down their comments. And once those agenda items come up, they can bring up those comments within that three minute minute period. I think it it just means that more homework would be done by council members rather than. Trying to wordsmith and talk about agenda items. All evening.
Hey, um, Councilman Divala. I think you're on mute. Are you talking? We can't hear you.
Brevity is good. Being prepared is also really important. I like being able to discuss, so I don't see how. It works in it in a case such as this, for example, where we're going line by line. So I and I agree also, the third thing you said, Councilmember Smith. Not to wordsmith as a group, so those are all great. I just, I don't. Don't see how limiting three minutes. Twice on a topic is going to get us to those three things that you said that I think are really important. Minutes for. Opening comments. Yeah, that makes sense.
And maybe the 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 difference would be. When there's a voting item on the agenda. As opposed to a work session.
Okay.
But I just think that, you know, there's just way too much time spent on discussing. Items on our agenda.
Councilman Cersei, or Councilman Divala, were you done? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking it through.
I I I think the the discussion is why we're here, right? Do you actually kind of think through in a thorough way the issues that are before us? I agree that limiting council comments to three minutes might make sense to do. I think the approach, Councilmember Smith, that you may be describing is one that's similar to the Hill. But keep in mind, usually there's tons of staffers and work that happens in agreements that are made behind the scenes before people get to the dials. And use their three minutes to make their little talking point. So, I mean, I think that what we do here is a bit of a combination of the two. I agree, like, you know, if we were in a place where we had made a lot of. Are able to kind of do a lot of this work behind the scenes to kind of get to the point that when something. When something comes before us, we're just listening to a testimony and responding, but what we're actually doing here is a bit of like. Work sessiony kind of thing, so. I I would err more on limiting the council comments to three minutes. I'm less inclined to have a buzzer every time. Get called on around, you know, talking through an issue or. Total three minutes. I think I think that's a little a little overkill.
Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, I I would say a lot of it depends on how it work. If, for example, we're saying. There would only be a total of three minutes twice on this entire. Agenda item that we're talking about now, I wouldn't agree with that if the idea that there might be limits on each individual individual part within it that came up. I suppose that that could be workable. I'm fine with limiting council comments to three minutes. I would say in terms of the Hill comparison. You know, with four hundred and thirty five members of the House, there has to be some limits. Anyone can speak for five minutes whenever they want in the Senate with a hundred people. Of course, there's no limits. What we do is almost more like a hearing where you're recognized by the the chair, usually. It's a five minute thing, but you know, I agree with. Councilmember Cersei, we're we're sent up here to to really discuss these things. I think a a lot of it can be avoided if we. We did that in this case, having a subgroup of three people work through it, we distilled it down, so there's only, you know. Five to ten issues that need to be discussed and admittedly we are wordsmithing them, but we, most of the wordsmithing was done. Out of, you know, in in the work of that small. Working, so I I'd be, I agree with the idea of three minutes for council comments, but I. I come down on the side of not restricting. Counsel debate.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank Councilmember Smith for raising this idea. I think, again, I would support, it sounds like there is enough support on the council comments to. Limit that to three minutes. And again, I I think that. It's important for the, I think it's beneficial for the community to see how this baloney is made. We. You know, by discussing these things in the open like this, I think it's helpful, but I also think that. That Councilmember Smith makes a good point that we could probably find ways to. Make the council meetings go a little faster and so might be helpful sometime to have that as a separate discussion.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostick, sorry, Councilmember Kovar, that's an old hand, right?
Yeah, I I'm not sure I heard everything because I was trying to get back in to Zoom, but um. I I think it's a really good thing to think about in terms of the the amount of time that we're taking and I I like. Limiting ourselves and thinking it through, but I do also want to make sure that we're doing plenty of discussion. On the the topics and the work sessions. The one thing I want to think through with regard to limiting the council comments, which I think is a really good idea. But is the the idea which was presented earlier in the. In the meeting by one of the public commentators about making sure that we have a chance to kind of address everything. That public commentators said, at least in, you know, in a way to kind of say, we'll loop back with you, which I think is a really great. A really great thing to do as much as we can, but it also will take additional time. And isn't necessarily something we can prepare ahead of time and in our comments, so. Just want to make sure that 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 we think through that as well as we're thinking about limiting council comments during that period.
So my sense from the council, I'm hearing from the councils, will add in limiting council comments during the the opening. To three minutes. But what I what I'm hearing is, and we can think on this a little bit more, is that the general sense of council is not to limit. Formally in this document, com- length of commenting. On during work sessions or voting sessions, but to be more conscious of how much time. We're taking. Is that a good sense? And then if somebody comes up with an idea. That we want to try in terms of. Limiting council comments, we can, we can put that in next time or and we can open up this document anytime we want. It's our procedure, so. If we want to look at some models, maybe that other places do and add that, we can do that as well. So I think we'll do that and then just the other item. Here, and I do think as Councilman Kostick said that lots of times we we don't. Necessarily recognizing what members of the public said during public comments sometimes come up when we do the work sessions or the voting items. I know many folks usually refer back to public commentators, but and so tonight's one example, and I'm trying to find. Oh, here it is. Six, when a speaker asks questions during public comments, to the extent possible. Responses may be provided later in the meeting, after the meeting writing, or at a future meeting in city manager comments. I don't know if. Folks had. Wanted to look at what Ms. Miller recommended and if anyone had any changes there. Yeah, well, Councilwoman Kostick, sorry.
Sorry, I thought I went frozen again there.
No, sorry, I I was, sorry, I was playing, I was getting tired.
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say I would like to revisit this section. I don't have specific wording right now, but I really would like us to to come back, and I think. Ms. Miller sent some some draft language that I'd love to to look at. Incorporating.
I know, I was thinking instead of the may or will. You know, I just think it's sometimes it's hard because we don't know the answer. Frankly. In the moment, it may, or it may be. Yeah, come out, so I'm I'm trying to.
A response, so. I think the, I think all she was looking for was to give a response of some kind. An answer if you can, but if not, an acknowledgement at least.
Yes, and well, I guess I would say that I I think for the most part, many of us already do that. By thanking members of the public for coming and commenting, even if we can't. Address their comments, so I'm trying to, I want to make sure I'm being, I'm understanding. Yeah, that. All right, I will highlight it and people can think about it. Before we vote on these. All right, I think Councilman Kostick, did you also have something under the visual? Use of visual, audio, visual materials, I think.
Yeah, I had just, I'd sent a couple of questions to the city attorney about that and some other sections and just wanted to make sure that the language was. Clarified. In this case, I was just concerned that the current language might actually prohibit people from. In person displaying, you know, something they might hold up during their public comments, like a a. Sign or a photo or something. Which I don't think is the intent. I I my understanding of the intent here is that we we want to make sure we don't get viruses in our electronic system. So I just wanted to to modify it so that it was was saying that.
So, um. I don't know if we still this, yes, we still the city attorney with us. Did, can I just highlight this one for your review?
Yes.
Okay.
And if there's, if Councilmember Kostick wants. And i- if there's, if Councilmember Kostic wants my thoughts, now I'm happy to, to give them to the extent that's possible, but if we want to come back to them later, that's fine, too.
I think all of us would agree that we wouldn't want to limit someone showing a sign or something like that, I feel like this was, this was really meant just for audiovisual materials so that we, we weren't, we weren't doing flash drives and things like that, or whatever.
I, I'll look at it again, Mayor, and make sure it comports with that intent.
That lovely future color is yours, then. All right, then we have written in audio testimony, public hearings. So I'm gonna highlight this as well, because this goes back to the commenting at special meetings, that conversation we had. Announcement by Councilmember hand votes, video recording, just stop me if you have ADA notice. Councilwoman Kostic, I think you had a really good change under the language interpretation.
Yeah, I'm violating Councilmember Smith's three minute rule here. Yes, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with the phrasing there, because I, I think it makes it sound like the residents who are not, who, who are not English speaking are only interested in particular topics. And, and I don't think that's true, I think all topics that we talk about are important to all of our residents, and, and so, I'm not sure if I had specific, I think I wanted to take out on topics of particular interest. And just say in general that upon request, or or maybe there's some other wording related to, you know, and I understand we can't translate everything all the time, we just don't have the capacity to do that, but I, I'd like to rephrase that.
Our collection was that you suggested taking out topics of particular interest and just having it be on request.
Well, but that was something we discussed, and I didn't want to do it just upon request.
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay.
But I, I hear what you're, I, I completely agree with Councilwoman Kostic, but I think where this, this phrase, this, this language came from was the idea that it, we didn't want just to be encumbered on, on the person who needed the, the translation to have to request it, but that we were offering it. Councilmember Kovar, do you have?
What about, I mean, what we want is for them to be able to press it, but on, on matters of wide interest, it, it should be, that should be the default, right? I don't know that we have to provide it necessarily, if it's just about one speed bump on, on one street, but on matters of wide general interest, it, it ought to be, you know, not the default, but something we strive for in addition to requests.
All right, I'm just gonna write that here, I'm, I'm might, I'm not used to meeting until
We had a way of, of deciding in advance whether we should go past 11 o'clock.
I know, I just imagine that. I've been, I've been in bed by 10 the last, last few weeks. Okay, I'm just gonna put that here and we can revisit, but does that take care of Councilwoman Kostic, your? We'll have to fix the language for that one. Okay. And then we have agenda packets, the content, this is one that we'll have to this one, this one is in the right order, so that one's fine. Agenda preparation. Electronic participation and conduct of council, and I, Councilwoman Kostic, I know you had a question here, but did the city attorney answer it to?
Yes, I believe so, if we can just modify that wording, I think there was a section where it sounded like the mayor was not a part of things that apply, like the remote participation, and so, if that was not the intent of the working group to recommend, then then I think we should modify that to make it clear.
Do you remember where it is, so I can just highlight it to make sure?
It was four one?
Correct.
It might be a little bit, it might be like four one three or something like that. I think if you scroll down.
Oh, it says the mayor will announce, is that? No.
I had it as four one general, the intro to that section was yeah, what I marked as Casey's concern.
Members of the city, oh, maybe we should just say members of the city council and mayor? May attend, is that what you meant?
Yeah, and then I think in four one one, maybe it says the council member shall give notice to the mayor, I, I think just in general, there was a section there where it looked like the mayor wasn't a part of making a request.
I, I'll take a look at it and make sure it's consistent throughout that section, so that it can't be read that way.
Okay. All right, so then that's the virtual, and then we have council relations and communication with city staff. Stop me if anything here. Councilmember relations with one another.
I, I do have one thing there. A five, 10, I would like to add, as feasible or when feasible to the sentence there that where it talks about staff and council members, all, all should provide advanced notice of questions, concerns, or substantial amendments or revisions to agenda items prior to the meeting when feasible, because I, there will certainly be cases where we're gonna have questions and things that we simply don't know until we get into the discussion.
And then, all right, council member relations with one another. Rules of procedure. Council working groups. That's it. I'm at the end. Anything else?
I'm sorry, but I do have one more thing. And that was, I'll send some language around for, for this section eight, about just making sure that the, that working groups and individual council members are not representing, what they're saying as representing the entire council, if that hasn't been something that's been voted on yet.
Yeah, that's it, that's I remember you sent that in there. I'll just copy what you put in the note and put it in here. So we have it all in one place, that's a great addition. Well, so I think then everything should be in this document. I'll stop sharing. Any other comments or questions on this document? All right. Not seeing anything, then I will save it and send it to the city attorneys, the city manager, and I, I believe next week we're gonna vote on this, but if we need to push it while we look at some of the, the advice from the city attorney on public comments, then we can push it down for another another week. Good, all right, anything else then? All right, then we're done by 11:30, that's not bad. First meeting back, all right, thank you, everyone, again, welcome back to council meetings and see you on the 18th, don't forget about the Martin Luther King holiday and the service projects that are going on, thank you, everyone, have a good rest of the.
Night.